It is a special. I don't know, it's a council workshop, it's March seventh. Five thirty eight. The roll call.
All right, of course.
Here.
Councilor Bergner.
Here.
Excuse me, Councilor Phillips.
He's muted.
That's, yeah.
He might not be able to.
Well, yeah, he may be in a position where he's not able to. I'll call by phone, Councilor Richards.
Here.
And Councilor Gross.
We have an agenda for our workshop, there's six items. We're still preparing to talk about this.
Yep.
So I make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Hold on a second. Gee.
Good.
Do you have edits?
Well, there's one other thing, but I don't have it with me, so. It was just about organizational charm. That I thought would fit in here, but that's okay.
All in favor, say if you're gonna be saying aye.
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 Alright.
Aye.
You said aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for. consenting to this workshop to, for discussion purposes only. Finding that. There are some. Some things that we are still lacking some information on. Or still in the research. Specifically with regard to Gold Rush itself in terms of. Trying to separate them. From the city and Mike is still working on the memo for that, I ordered. Some documentation from the state. Today, but, but. In terms of tonight's discussion, it really. I, I almost think we'll need to have a separate Gold Rush Committee and City Council Workshop. To actually, because that may be more than, you know, to bring us both, all groups together. And rather than like you guys are meeting the first Thursday and then we don't meet till the third. So who goes first and, and kind of, I'm just thinking. From a practical standpoint, it may be best to, to deal with Gold Rush as its own standalone workshop. But then with regard to tonight, then it, then it's kind of more broad overview on how do we want to deal with. Other nonprofits, how can we support them without. Leaving anybody out or, you know, what, what kind of policy. Position would council like to see.
Ask a question before we go to that. So you mentioned a Gold Rush workshop, what would, what would that be for, what's the purpose of it be?
That would be really for. For Mike, I think to lay out options that are available. Pros, cons, whatever.
Okay.
And.
That's enough, I just.
Yeah, and have that whole discussion. So we're all getting, staying on the same page and asking, you know, questions we want. Answers.
Yeah, I, I like that idea, just the standpoint of it, it's another meeting, but at the same time, if we could. Even potentially do with the Gold Rush meeting, it would be ideal, so we don't have to have another meetings.
I would agree with that, that extra meeting are. It, it's too much, we just simply have too many, it's not sustainable. I mean, I could, you know, it's hard because. I, you know, Jim and Jim and I and Riley make it to everyone and there's one council member who doesn't make it to any of our meetings and. I, I don't know how to reconcile that with our, it's, it's hard.
And right at last month, what did you say, we had how many meetings that you were at?
I was at eight myself.
Yeah, and that, um, and granted, three of those were fire department, fire, you know, so, and then a joint one, but, but. They were all necessary and productive and.
I agree, but is, if we can consolidate as much as we can, like you said, if it can be during Gold Rush, I just really think we have to do that. And we need to start maybe putting, getting this stuff on the agenda for our regular meetings.
Right.
Like making sure we're prepared for those meetings and have this there. That's what I would like.
So our Gold Rush meeting starts at six thirty, so. We could do five thirty to six thirty with Mike.
Okay.
Is a possibility.
I don't know if that's possible though, for a lot of the members to make five thirty with work. I mean, it's hard.
Yeah, we could survey the meeting.
It's hard.
The committee meeting. Well, that's.
But I do think it needs. A standalone conversation with everybody.
I agree. You know.
I would agree to be sooner the better because once April and May comes, our Gold Rush meetings get. Pretty detailed.
Anyway, with just our work.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe there's a way. And push, take some of the items on, on one of the upcoming Gold Rush agendas and pushing it to the next one or. Condensing it a little bit and then squeeze all this in.
I guess it really waits, it's really dependent on what Mike's gonna say.
Yeah.
The memo may help explain everything, I don't know how much detail he's gonna go into, but. Let's see what Mike says and then see what we need to do to, or how much time we'd need to share. That, those discussion points for both being, for both the groups.
And I, I think it's a combination of. What Mike says and then what we all decide as a council to. To understand how we want to do it and then how are we going to handle, so your next topic. How are we gonna handle it, because I think we, we've got to handle them all the same. We have to be fair and equitable.
So. That's another thing though to talk about because currently we're the sole incorporator of Gold Rush, so it is a city entity. Versus all the other nonprofits aren't. So that's the difference.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm thinking of it from a business standpoint too, it's kind of like if you were to sell. A business, you were incorporated, you transfer ownership and then. In doing that, then. Then there creates that separation and again, I want to be clear that it's, the city is. Is more, speaking on behalf of the city. More than willing to support. The Gold Rush Committee and I know the Gold Rush Committee wants to do. You know, what it can for the city in, I had another conversation with Mike yesterday and one of the. The specific purpose or intent in the incorporation was that. Gold Rush would be contributing to the general fund.
National Night Out, fireworks.
We always pay for that.
It's the only two we've ever donated to. You've never donated to the city, never donated to the fire department, at least in my eight years, we've never done that. It's always been just the National Night Out, support, funding it and funding fireworks.
And then when we didn't have fireworks, we turned them on, so.
So fireworks came back to us, we kept the National Night Out for twenty-five hundred.
And I think too.
So what's your impression, what, is there something else we're missing that you're seeing that we're donating or?
Well.
I don't quite understand what you're referencing to.
Well, the point is that, that as Mike and I were interpreting the documents. It was. Basically that. Gold Rush as the nonprofit fundraising arm could contribute. Dollars toward the general fund. Not. The city donating to Gold Rush, if that makes sense.
Not really.
What does, what is the city donating to Gold Rush? The building and are you seeing that?
Well.
All time, right?
Right, I mean, the, you know, this whole thing kind of came up too with the invoice, right? Granted, it was late, admitted. But it, it also pointed to the value that the city has. Historically. Provided. And that, that level of support won't go away, but it, you know, it will be nice to have. You know, because when the invoice was presented, it was, you know, if, if we didn't know whether it's gonna be this, we could have rounded up the volunteers, well. Great, you know, we're happy to work with volunteers and the sentence to serve folk and, you know, doing. Um, what we can to, to support without. The taxpayers necessarily. Funding that event when it's supposed to be a fundraising entity. Right?
But the city doesn't. Pay for any of our operating budget.
She's saying because they use, they work, their workers work, so. Even though a lot of communities donate their time. To their town festivals and things and don't build their town festivals. From what, from what you've found out. I will just say this straight, I mean, you know, there most, there's most of the people I've talked, think, you know, we should, this should be a grandfathered in situation, we should continue the way we have. And I will say one with almost certainty, we will not be able to afford whatever you charge us and be able to continue on with what we're doing. We have a room here, we've got the Wi-Fi, I think we use the Wi-Fi, maybe, I don't know, there's things that are, I don't know, maybe not, but there are things that we just simply won't be able to afford. If the, you know, the inc, if the cost is going to go up for, for workers. If we're charged, I, I feel like we're gonna be nickel and dime for every tiny thing that we've been doing, it was never the intention of the, of the.
Hello.
Founding and it was never.
Yeah, I know, that's what I can't understand, so I'm trying to figure out what to do, so.
And it was never. This was just never the intent for it to get like this and I think. I don't want to be on the city council that destroys Gold Rush, because I think when people. And it's gonna be bad and it's gonna be perceived that way, I just want you to, I want to be, I'm, because it is a fifty-one year. You know, crock or show and. Every time there's a change like this and there's like this big disruption and things happen, it gets real nasty. With not only our community members, but our. Vendors as well. And I just think that would be so incredibly unfortunate. And the amount of work we do. To not be able to provide the same amount of money to the, the organizations that we've been. And it's because it keeps going down because our show keeps shrinking because we lose vendors every year for many various, for various reasons, that has been happening for a long time. Hard to do an antique show and nobody wants antiques. But. I just can't see it being sustainable. If our costs are gonna, from the, you're gonna go up and we're gonna lose, I know you say you're gonna lose, we're not gonna lose a level of support, but I think that's exactly what we're talking about. Level of support has already gone down.
How, how so?
Well, because we are being charged for the work that for fifty years they haven't, we haven't been charged for. So that support's already decreasing.
Yeah, but I, I think too though, and I'm not for Gold Rush going away. And, and I honestly, I don't think it will go away. But I think if you, there's a couple of things in my mind, because I, I, I hear the, the, the term support, you know, the, the city will support it. We have to define what does support mean, because yes, Gold Rush is, is here, it's been here. But what do we do with the next, with the next big thing that wants to come along and, you know, another committee or organization, I guess we would call it. Are we setting a precedence that they want the same backing? And I, I'm, I'm totally with you Dana, I, I don't want to be the city council that kills Gold Rush and I don't think we will be. But in the same token, to Sunny's point, we have to look at our taxpayers too. You know, because it could be something that our taxpayers are saying, yeah, we don't want to fund it, that you're always gonna get some that do and some that don't. But the other side of that is we're not a charity, we have to, we have to understand, we're not here to give it away. Can the city donate? You know, that's something to talk about, you know, can the city say, okay, we're gonna donate X hours of. Kane's Department and X hours of. City Hall staff. I think we have to look at it from that standpoint, because I think as our city grows, we're gonna. We're gonna be looked at as setting a precedent.
So this has already been said, it's in, we're incorporated, it's, you know, Carl's brother did it years and years ago, this isn't a new thing, we're not.
No.
And so for fifty-one years is how it's been and, and it was incorporated, I think in the eighties. So. The precedent's been set and so like the grandfather clubs, you know, like, we do that all the time, there's. Sheep and horses and stuff across the street because they've been grandfathered in, I don't know why that isn't the same thing. When you say an organization, a new organization wants to come in and raise funds and use our city hall, well, that is highly. Unlikely and, and also there is precedent already set by the state that they no longer do this. So that isn't something that we would even have to worry about, because that's not a thing. Now.
What would we do if, if another organization came in and said. On this weekend, we want you to shut your town down and we want to do the same kind of a thing. You know, that, that could happen. And again, I'm not saying get rid of Gold Rush, I'm definitely not saying get rid of Gold Rush, I'm just saying, let's think about how can we do this different? Keep it sustainable, not, not allow it to become, not, not allow the city to become a charity. To organizations. You know.
I just don't see.
That, that's what I, that's.
See any of that happening, that's what I don't understand, like what, in what? Just, I want an example of an organization you think is gonna come in and ask a city, and has this ever happened? Shut your whole town down, we're gonna use your buildings, we're gonna use your streets, we're gonna use your staff. This isn't a thing that would happen, this is something that's already been happening for fifty years.
We wouldn't let it. I mean, I'm hearing that we wouldn't let it.
But also, what, in what world is that allowed, is that legal? That's not, this isn't something new, this isn't an organization that just walked in, this has been here forever.
But it's an organization, I.
It's just, it's different though, I had a totally different opinion. Before I knew it was an incorporated into the state, I had a totally different opinion. I didn't realize they had gone through the work and they had gone through the motions and they had gone to the legislature, I didn't know that, that's different to me. Than just the group coming and saying, hey, guys, we want to do this, it's a lot, it's a bigger deal. And when I started thinking about all the things that we would lose and all the time that our volunteers put in and just the history of it. That's something that, no offense to you Sunny, and no offense to Mike, but you don't have any idea of, not even, not even a little bit. And so.
I don't think.
That's. Well, I.
What it was, because I think.
Oh.
For us, it's been put a lot in.
Sure, but I mean, I know what we're putting in now and it's insane, I mean, it's like a full-time job for some people. Outside of their full-time jobs. And so I just. I, I'm super passionate about it and I just, I, I need to put that out there, that like I can't, I can't support separating. And I think, like I said, my, my mind was changed when I learned Warren, but. I, I totally support not making city council members be on it, I think that that's a great idea, because.
That's a, that's a bylaw change.
Sure, and nobody wants somebody on it that doesn't want to be there, that's just unpleasant, you know, for everybody. And that's, that's where I stand, so.
Well, and going way back to remember when I first came, you know, one of my goals was. That I want council members to be council members. First and foremost, that's what I want your job to be, because that's what you were elected for, for. And, and I appreciate that we've, we've moved down, down to one basically other than the EDA and. Uh, planning and zoning, down to one representative with an alternate, I mean, that's, that's progress too. And I, I. And I've said this before with regard to Cold Rush, Gold Rush, I think. I guess I, and maybe I'm just the eternal optimist, but I'm thinking that. People will step forward. If they know that there's a place for them. If, if the Gold Rush is managed by five council members, what incentive do I really have to go? And be part of something where it doesn't matter if you need me for a quorum or not, because. Your bylaws require you guys to be there and, and. You know what I'm saying, I mean, I just, one of the things, one of the things I really would like to see is more. More. More and new people get involved, so that, you know, we're not relying on.
Yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent with that and I think it's actually happened in the last few years, we've gotten, you know, incorporated township, so that, that has brought, so I agree in that.
I'm seeing that, you know, if we create opportunities for them. I, I think people will step up to the plate and. And again, maybe I'm just, you know, pie in the sky, too idealistic, but I, I am an optimist and I.
I think one of our, one of our fears is that, and this is all dependent when Mike comes back, but, but. If Mike says we have to start over with new incorporation and I don't know what cost involved with that or attorney fees for the Gold Rush, that's just another expense. That we're gonna have to incur. So that's my, one of my concerns about having to do that, I don't know what. The logistics are and the cost of doing that, but I'm hoping we can keep the incorporation as it is, but just a set of new bylaws.
Exactly.
But getting back to your comment that you and Mike had about support back to the general fund. Um, I see that as gathering permits, gathering permits, you probably do, I'm guessing. Twenty-five to thirty gathering permits, gathering permits are twenty-five dollars, maybe they should be a hundred, I don't know. But they, so that is income that comes in there for people that are parking cars, people that are having. Uh, by resolution, having separate garage sales during that three week, or three day period. The other thing is food license, the city gets a hundred dollars per food license, so we typically have nineteen to twenty food vendors. That's another two thousand dollars, so there is a lot of income that supports the general fund from that standpoint. There's a hauler's permit, half a dozen of those, but those are basically two revenues and those fees cover, in my opinion, they should cover all the administrative staff to do that. That's already covered, they shouldn't have to, that shouldn't be a discussion about taking your time away from. Because of School Rush, because you're getting paid to do that. The city staff.
Have a question then?
Yep.
So the last two years I've been doing this and I get the food vendors stuff, I don't get it finished. I get the list and I get maybe a fourth of it and then I have to go out and hound these people. To get in their insurance and get in their money and get in their applications. It's a lot of time that I spend, I mean, it's a good two or three weeks before the show happens, I'm constantly on them, hey, I need this, I need this, I need this. So, here, there's another thing, should I be getting those already done? If you guys are paying somebody as your coordinator to do this. I should just be getting, okay, we had this many vendors, here's the money out of what they paid us and I get a copy of everything. I'm amending up doing more of the work than what they are.
Is this, can I ask a question about, were you here when Carol did it? Was, was it the same?
She had a little bit more of it done than. Um, Joanne did and it might have been because Joanne went on vacation right before too, which probably put a hinder on it. But I still, I'm, I'm doing a lot of calling, emailing, everything.
That's a fair, I agree, that's something we should take more responsibility for.
So, you know, that's another thing to look at too, when I'm looking at this, like what exactly. I, are you expecting out of us?
Yeah.
And I, I'm not saying, I think maybe what you guys need to do is sit and look and say, okay. This is what I would, like you said, you want to donate so many hours of, you know, Kane's people's time and so many hours of our people's times, you know, and. Maybe you don't get charged that, but that's something you guys as a council could decide, how do you want that to play out?
And I think too, we need to understand. From. The. City shop or, you know, Kane's group of people. How much time do you guys put into this and I think we need to have some detail around that.
It's been documented already. That's been documented already.
That was Kane's, that wasn't any of my time.
Yeah, that's a good point, but.
That was all of the city shops time, and that had none of my time on that, just so you guys know.
Okay, so that was just yours, yeah, so I think, yeah, so if it is documented.
And then remember, we cut it in half.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, it would. It's hard, it's hard to justify doing that amount of work all year round for a shrinking. Amount to donate to the back, you know, so that's what, that's where it's gonna end up, that's where we're gonna, we're gonna find ourselves, we're gonna have to have that. I, I don't want to have to have that, but eventually that is what's gonna happen.
But it might even come down to, at, at some point, until this really. Morphs into something. Better in terms of, of numbers and stuff, it might be a situation where we can't afford to be so generous with our donations for a while. Until we get this built up, I know our numbers are down from what it used to be, I, I've heard numbers of eight hundred. You know, back in the day and I remember coming here, I've been here for over thirty years and I remember coming here and you couldn't hardly walk through this place. There were so many vendors and it, it was way over there, way over here, it was unbelievable. I, do I think we can get back there, I think we can, you know, we just have to get through the city water and sewer project.
Well, and I'm, I could be wrong too, but, but I'm thinking that, that part of that is. You know, not necessarily putting. An extra load on the five of you or four of you, but bringing in those new people that can really. Get the word out there and has the time to solicit, you know, if, if you have, you know, from. Forty-five, fifty years ago, have a list of past vendors and we can follow up on them.
Bless it, they're dead, Sunny.
Oh.
Yes.
It's an antique.
Yes, they're, they're not.
As our city grows, you would hope there would be more volunteers and more people that, you know, do want to get involved, we know our city will grow, but do we know what percentage? For sure we don't, but. And then I know the load is always on the ones that volunteer, it's always the same, you know, like it keeps getting packed, I mean, I do that with our church and. Other organizations and they wear the people out that do volunteer.
Well, and maybe. Maybe if antiques are kind of like on the. You know, because everything's cyclical, right, so if that's not. You know, cause everything's cyclical, right? So if that's not, you know, maybe.
You know, again, this is, we've been doing this, like, the only, the reason I started. The re- only reason I'm here today on this council is because I started volunteering Gold Rush in twenty seventeen or eighteen, can't remember. So I was one of those people you're talking about, and it brought me all the way here. So it definitely can do that.
We brought township people in.
We brought, so we're doing, I mean. I appreciate the comments. We were doing the as much and the best we can with some really amazing and talented people in the community. Um, so we are, we're doing everything that you said, so, um. Again, I think there's just a lack of understanding on your part of what we do and how hard we work.
So with that, I'd like to. We're next time on the agenda.
Absolutely, um. Office and committee space allocations, and here again, you know, this gets into. As I mentioned before, we have three tenants in the building. One pays a dollar, that's the history room. Which, you know. History center. And that, you know. Maybe makes sense because it's the depository of all things. History of Orinoco, um, and then Gold Rush pays a hundred dollars a year. The township pays a thousand dollars a year, um.
That's an idea.
And the township, thousand dollars, that's tied to the orderly annexation agreement too. It's my understanding that's where it's added. I'd have to look at the annexation agreement again, but I think that's, that was part of the arrangement. Um, from a financial standpoint.
So that's it?
Some discussion about changing that, then I. And we can look at that annexation agreement again, but then we'd have to go back and revisit that annexation agreement that was signed in twenty fifteen.
And expires in twenty thirty-five.
What are you, what are you following on renters? Tenants, thank you. How long has the history center been paying a dollar a year? How long have they been up there? Anybody?
Before my time, long.
Early two thousands.
What's that?
Early two thousands.
Do you have an agreement? Is there paper?
There was an agreement that they signed last year. Before that, I don't.
And Riley, and you said there is a contract with the township.
Oh, yeah.
There's an orderly annexation agreement.
Um, I think it does, let me just.
I'm curious. The thousand dollars. That's coming out of the fire or first responders last night. We're, next week, we're going to them to ask for more money for our fire. To have them, so keep saying fire, first responders, because the majority of the calls are in the township. And we pay, the town pays that a lot more than the township. But I'm wondering, can some of these funds just be allocated to first responders from the township rental? Cause a thousand dollars, it's not a thousand dollars to rent a room. I mean, that's not like.
It stays expensive.
Well, I guess, but.
Yeah, and and, you know, just again, me coming in from with a different perspective is. There's typically, you know, some rationale, you know.
That's what I'm wondering.
Two dollars a square foot or a dollar a square foot or whatever, you know, plus. Um, they have use of the odd, this room and audio visual for their meetings, um. Kitchen access, you know, whether they used it or not, it's it's there, um. But and then, like I mentioned at Gold Rush, you know, nonprofits, we can, we can do, you know, a nonprofit rate or something. But I think there needs to be some uniform rationale. As a starting point, and then adjust. Nonprofit, or you're you're gonna commit to using it every month on, you know, for. I'm thinking of the um crafters, you know, they're they're regular users and they, um. They're committed to using our space and. But they pay a different rate. I mean, if they're paying. The normal, what is that, twenty-five dollars if it's less than two hours and so they're paying more rate? Cause they're more than two hours, or are they two?
Yeah, two. Two different people coming, do back to back.
Okay, and the other thing is, you know, I see the big room upstairs, that's a lot of space. Can't we stack? People in there, so I mean, so we we have, we have three organizations. Using space, can't they all share that space? Cause how how often? Does township meet, or what do they use the room for? Is it just the meetings? I I mean, they have the meetings here, that's just a work.
Downstairs with a bunch of maps.
Yeah, that needs to be talked about. I would like to talk about that. Have you never been to the history center? Oh, no, that's, it's a setup situation. That's not going anywhere. Like, they're not gonna be traveling.
No, no, and that that I totally understand, but I'm thinking, you know. Like the township, like Gold Rush, and you know, if we have others, do we, and I know the township has. Their maps and all that, Gold Rush has a lot of stuff. Can we use one room for that? And, you know, is there closet space or something that we could, you know, accommodate? So we're not taking all the real estate with three committees. You know, have them share it.
Well, one room.
Well, not history, forget history.
Um, but Gold, you know, they have its computers and so it wouldn't be secure. It would need to be secure.
In that, in that room.
It's an office, Joanne works there.
No, I know. But does she have to work there? And she worked from her home. I I know there's things stored down there, like shirts and I don't know all the trouble down there, file cabinets.
Supplies down there.
I'm guessing that room. That we share, so it's the township one.
Oh, yeah.
Township room is on the other side, it's, they, that's, it's packed full.
It's just.
So it's the history center that's on top of, at the top of the stairs on the right.
No, on the, on the left, and on the right is just a empty room right now.
So that I'm.
We have, I mean, I don't think space is our issue right now. I don't think moving people around is our issue right now, but I think. Eventually it might be, but I think when that comes, we should probably talk about.
Three more people sitting up in upstairs room now. Or C representative.
Oh, you mean office.
Sonya Renee and project specialist. So there's, there's desk up there for two people now.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So maybe the seated person can use, put the council tables together, they're just.
I see what you're saying.
Cause we don't wanna necessarily leave.
We don't.
Stop out.
I know.
Where others have access, so we gotta have locked door spaces, you know, for our people. Yeah, and that, that's what I was saying is if we can stack these, you know, the township. And Gold Rush or have Joanne's house or have her office in her home, but. You know, maybe closet space for all the stuff, you know.
Locking cabinets or whatever.
Yeah, because we are, we're gonna need the space.
Right.
You know?
Well, and and. As I'm thinking about space too, in in terms of. I definitely need a private office. So that I. I guess I've just never not had one, so, um. But now definitely, um, with Renee taking the the financial track. That that stuff really needs to be secure, um. Preferably in locking file cabinets in a locked room.
Right.
Um, and then we kinda have, today we finished up, I think the last, I'm still mulling whether or not to let one other. Candidate be interviewed for, um. The admin assistant position, but so we've got the admin assistant, we've got project specialist, we've got, um. The E B C D A person coming on, um, and that's later in the conversation. We've got a building inspector that, you know, needs space and, um. Who was the other, um, we had Smith and Schaefer in today to try and get, um, us, cause. The auditors will be onsite April seventeenth. So we need to make sure that we're ready for them.
It's almost like we need permanent worker spaces and we need some hoteling spaces. For those people like Smith and Schaefer.
Can we cubicle up that room upstairs?
Well, that's what I was thinking, we put cubicles, eh, you know, have permanent. You know, maybe there's a stud wall that goes up for the permanent that you can have our records and stuff.
Uh, we do have an office up there planned.
Yeah.
That we had Stan Tech put together in twenty twenty. At that time, we were talking about a separate wall down through the middle.
Upstairs?
Upstairs. And having desks. So this, I'll try to just, so this is the upstairs, here we're over in council room. Here's the upstairs room total. Where's, that time we were talking about having a wall through there and then have an office space here next to the shelving is, and this would still be a a committee room now. Or a big conference room, but you know, we can, we can move that wall so we can accommodate more desks up there too. Um, we also talked about doing a split door. Uh, for people coming up to pay bills and stuff like that.
We don't.
But we do weren't, we didn't talk about a private office like you're referring to, but just there's more more desk space.
And I'm wondering though, shouldn't, cause don't we have to think of the handicap? One up the stairs. I, you know, one thing that I had in my mind was. How often do we use that back there? Is that usually used as a rental? Could we, for a temporary, cause we are.
That was another.
Like you said, we're gonna grow out of.
We're gonna need to.
Yeah, we're we're going to grow out of city hall, but can we throw a stud wall up? And and, you know, you'd have have the engineer draw something out of design, but can we throw a stud wall up and make two offices there like? You know, Sonny in office and maybe you have a lock file room where vital records are locked in that room.
Oh, we have one.
Yeah, and that, you know.
You've never been in it?
At the time we had this discussion, we were. Part of the office space that we did. Twenty twenty-one. What we have now was, it was just kind of remodeling, but once we started talking, it's my understanding. We start talking about expanding offices into this area to the senior room. And that was discussed, that was an alternative the council had in front of them. There was a cost associated with that. And, but the concern is, then we start getting to handicap accessible. And if you start doing that, then we're talking thousands of dollars to upgrade our bathroom. Both lavatories and and you're, is that correct? Sinks, stalls, everything has to be, so all of a sudden, it's several hundreds of thousands of dollars we're talking about.
But don't we have to know? Aren't we required?
We're not now, because we haven't done that remodeling.
Oh, okay.
So that was all part of this. Update here, this room here, I believe that was correct, when we talked about doing this upstairs. We just gonna have to remodel the whole down, and there's different reports here that. Mayor put together, yeah. This came to the mayor and the city council members back in June of twenty twenty.
I've been trying to find the blueprints for this building and haven't been able to. So if anybody knows, those are.
More documentation of that timeframe.
Are these copies I can?
I have in my files for some time.
Well, that's gonna cost us a lot more than it was.
And that's why we decided to do what we did because of the cost. And then we used American. Cars, we use the carers money for too.
That's right.
We wanted to get to the glass window and that was all part of using the carers fund, COVID.
Yeah.
Which is nice, is twenty-two thousand dollars, I think, to put that, remodel all that.
But at any rate, we're gonna have to update the bathrooms, right? If we do remodeling. We're gonna have to bring it to handicap accessible, no matter what we do, right?
We have bathrooms that are handicap accessible. They are.
Doesn't sound like that.
Why aren't the bathrooms, are they not wide enough, the doors?
Wide enough, the sinks aren't too low.
There's a whole list of.
Not far apart.
That's the ability issues. Yeah. But that's, that's why I was thinking if if, not that we have to solve this tonight, but if we do something up here. Then we, you know, cause if I would, if we do it upstairs, we're gonna have to give people.
We have some chair, that's what we talked about.
American using, uh, American Rescue Plan money, put in a chair lift. So people can use on the center.
Yeah.
It's hard to justify all these changes if we're gonna outgrow this building in how many years, like, that's the hardest thing.
Yeah, that's why I've seen it, just to drop a wall and put offices, then we're gone. We don't have to worry about a chair. We don't have to worry about other things.
Or cubicle.
Chairs, fifteen thousand dollars.
Is that what it is?
And we could probably get a used one, no more than it's been used, but.
Well, and there's nothing to say that, you know, if somebody wants to meet with me and and needs to come in through the. You know, I can come downstairs and meet with people, you know, that's not. Yeah, I mean.
I think it's important, you know, as long as you have a private setting, cause you're gonna have, you're gonna meet with staff. You're gonna meet with residents.
Developers.
Yeah. And you're gonna need to work here, yeah.
So.
So I think once you, once we hire these people and, but right now, it looks to me like we, there's two complete desk arrangements up there now, correct?
Two workstations.
Two workstation, I should say.
Yeah.
So the C D representative really could goodbye with, I'm, and I don't know what the requirements are, but. It's just a file cabinet, lock file cabinet, two drawer, and they bring their files with them and. Wi-Fi is up there, we have a hot point, so.
Hot spot. Do we have to worry about, um.
Chair, I mean, there's.
Privacy.
And again, I think, you know, they're gonna have to do the same thing and meet, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm just thinking like on the phone, is that an issue? If you have a C D A person and a staff, do we have to worry about that?
Depends on who the staff is, I suppose.
All right.
Good question, I just don't.
That is a good, that is a good point, though.
Something to think about, and I I think it's good that we're thinking about this, because I think we will outgrow. We just need to find a benefactor, give a city a bunch of money to build new buildings.
This, the downstairs, that downstairs room, that's that the township uses, that might also be a good place to drop a wall, because I feel like there's two entryways to that room.
Two entrances, right.
Two entrances to that room.
I think, don't all of the rooms have two entrances?
The upstairs one. Doesn't, upstairs does, yeah.
Yeah.
Our gold, our gold rush, oh, go, oh, there's two doors here.
And in the history center, I believe there's two. Yeah.
There's the gold rush room downstairs then.
The gold rush is one, but township is two. I mean, if you want privacy, there's the vault.
And the window.
There's also another creepy.
It's kind of blocked off, but that's where they did the coal and, you know, you can.
Oh, yeah, that.
Oh, my goodness.
We could lock you in there, okay.
Appreciate it, me.
Okay, let's uh move on to.
So how are we doing on time?
Six twenty-five or, well, two minutes over.
Yep.
Six hundred.
Here's Dan. That's Kane is here tonight. Um, and he missed my call about wanting to meet prior to the meeting, cause. When I plugged. And he missed my call about wanting to meet prior to the meeting because when I plugged in the. The salaries and wages and related uh para contribution and payroll taxes. We end up with a fifty seven seven. Deficit. Uh we had talked about um. A four percent increase. And one of the other things I'm gonna point out is this orange section somehow um. Well, I didn't highlight that, but there's, if you go up um three lines, four lines from that. Gold section, you see a state connection fee. That's, that's the revenue that we collect. From users and then the gold part was the expense side. Going as an expense back out to the state that we pay. So it's that. That eighty one cents a month per user is an in and out kind of thing. So somehow that got. Stuck as a revenue account. And we had to move it down, so. And then, of course, we have our um. Ever friendly. Potential coding issues that we're looking at. But then also, um if you look at twenty twenty two actuals, it shows two hundred and thirty two. Thousand to the positive. Eighty three thousand of that is. Showing up as a federal grant income. That's the very uh second line. On the top in revenues.
Which one?
It's the same type very top eighty three. The actual between twenty.
Oh, the eighty three.
And you're saying you moved it?
Yeah, do you where that comes from or?
That was just for last year.
So some of the numbers kind of didn't make sense to me when I. Okay, so here's my logic, right? Blue horizontal line on totaling revenues. Plus the yellow horizontal line. Tumbling expenditures. Gives blue and yellow makes green, so the. The green line should have been um. Actual nets, so.
So in twenty twenty one. It's a hundred and twenty one thousand. It is positive, is that right?
That's what. The reports come out say.
So in our audit report. It showed a net loss of twenty five thousand. Nine seventy two. That loss of twenty five thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars.
And I'm, you know, just as I'm looking at this right now, Ryan, that um. That could be that capital contribution is showing us a negative one forty seven on the spreadsheet. Remember, all, everything in the expenditure is a negative, so I don't know why. That would be showing up as uh presented as a.
So in twenty twenty. The. The water utility fund was just underwater, doesn't save, it looks like it was. Five hundred dollars or about and or smaller.
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty 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 twenty. And we showed one thousand. She chose a ninety five thousand debt.
So. So this has work to do yet um. Because um. Ryan, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the utility fund owes the general fund money anyway, right?
Uh it's um. We need to pay back the water utility fund. This is for the well payback loan. I think that's right. We we borrowed from the water utility fund.
I don't wanna speak out of turn or say the wrong thing, but I thought it was the other way.
We borrowed from two funds.
That listed under transfers out.
Well, that's what I'm looking at. Twenty thousand. Twenty one five. Because the the income looks pretty good, the two hundred and twenty twenty one actual is two hundred and twenty one thousand. And if you look at the chart of from our audit, the green line, it's in between two hundred thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand. Right here, right? So there's. The expenditures. On the scrap here show it to be about a hundred and twenty thousand. Which is. In twenty twenty. Actual was hundred and twenty six thousand.
For expenditures.
For expenditures, but then there's. We're doing appreciation.
Okay.
This is all audit for talk.
It's what?
It's all audit for talk.
Um so looking at the the general fund budget, we were supposed to be getting sixteen three. And from the waterfront and sixty seven hundred from the water sewer improvement fund right inside. So those are due from those funds to the general fund.
The twenty three thousand we paid for the loan to P F A. The check we send every year to the P F A for that well loan. Sixteen thousand and the seven thousand make up the twenty three thousand dollar figure.
Okay.
That's why I needed caught us that we didn't pay it back one year. And transition of manager staff, we missed it.
And then also getting it in really odd.
Yes, yeah.
So are we saying we're good?
No, because I don't think um. Well.
Okay.
This has got. Um at the top of page two, in the yellow, you've got um. Plugged in the sixty four thousand. Or sixty, yeah, sixty four thousand for the loan and twenty three twenty one seventy nine for the interest. Now, is that, that's on the G O bond. Is that? In addition to this other sixteen thousand that we just talked about?
The original one here, sixty six three twenty one, that is for the two thousand nine water project.
Was that again?
That's right here.
So that's sixty.
The twenty three hundred.
Interest and that.
So that two thousand nine water. And then so well two would be, that's separate.
Yes.
We take that in monthly, but then we pay that out somewhere else and I think that's there. I'll let you decide.
So what's that? So well two is separate?
And then you're saying, we bought the second well from River Park?
So that, so. We're in a deficit just on that line item. If we only collect twenty four thousand. For well two, but it's costing us sixty six thousand.
Well, sixty six thousand is the two thousand nine water project. The well two is the twenty thousand. The sixteen thousand plus the whatever the other number was, six thousand.
So where is the sixteen thousand showing up on their expense side?
Uh miscellaneous transfers out. Twenty thousand dollars.
That's just a little bit over. Pretty sixteen thousand.
Right, that's, that's how I take it. That's that, that's that payment back to well two. Is in the transfers out miscellaneous.
Okay, so that's the sixteen thousand that we talked about earlier coming to the general fund one hundred.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, good.
And as you can see, with more users. That amount is larger, five dollars per connection per month. On the revenue side.
And one of the things that I didn't get a talk, chance to talk with you about Kane, but even. I, as I was, you know, looking at the fee schedule and stuff, I'm almost inclined to think that we need a residential rate. And a commercial rate. To boost our revenues as well.
Absolutely.
Because the those commercial. Um users. Theoretically, put a a higher. Brain on the system.
Yep. You pump more, you treat more, more pump run time, more, more lights on, more electricity, more heat.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
At the time we had that discussion, we had that discussion earlier. And but I thought the tech, the our approach to was putting in the higher amounts.
It was at that time, Ryan, and yep, I, I think at the time we did discuss having a two different rates, residential and commercial. And then I think we said, well, why don't we capture the higher users with uh.
Bigger percent increases.
Well, right, bigger increases, the more you use, the more you pay. And that's what we've kind of adopted to date.
Yeah, three percent for residential for those lawyers, then it was five percent for the ones over twenty five thousand. So that caught the big. Residential that use irrigation all the time too.
Correct.
Because there's some big ones there.
But the base rate.
Basically, it was the same.
Was the same.
Yep, and I think to what Sonny's saying is, this is another way to capture. The the larger commercial users.
How are you, how are you gonna define commercial versus, I mean, with small business, big commercial, or we're only talking?
So when I do my reporting uh with the state, the D N R. I, I have to kind of make a draw a line is, is uh. Do people sleep there at night, right? You know, that's, that's residential to me.
Yeah.
Right? Where. The guy across the street. Right, a plumbing shop, that's commercial.
Sure.
Right? He doesn't sleep there.
What about an in home?
I'm shocked, and that's, yeah, so I'm kind of just wondering, so like, how do you know residential, commercial, so is that? And small business, you know, because there's some. Well, and I just think like a car wash, place with a car or, you know, commercial business like that. That, that makes sense to charge a higher base rate, but then if it's a small office. I, I mean, I don't, an office building, how, is that technically commercial? I don't know. That's what's tricky.
Yeah, so, so for me, like in all my reporting, the churches, the businesses, the gas stations.
Okay.
The, the, the bars, restaurants.
There, you're saying it's a business.
Yeah, the dog training place, it's a business. Uh and I think we've got thirty eight of those.
Is it, and is it, and is it common, is it common for to charge a base rate? A higher base rate for the.
Yes.
For the commercial businesses. Even, even in small business, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and, and sometimes, you know. Maybe it's easier to think of it in terms of residential versus non-residential.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
Like a church.
But there are homes, like you were saying, that pump out way more water, you know what I mean, than a business, but then. I guess their user, I mean, they're just gonna be hired.
The usage is gonna be.
The tiers that they're paying for water are are definitely higher, we're capturing it then.
So, just so I'm clear, like an in home. Beauty shop or an in home dog grooming. You know, they're gonna use a lot of water sewer. Are they still, would you still consider them residential, so they're paying?
That's a, that's a good question. I guess we haven't.
And they sleep there.
I guess we haven't come across that yet, Jim, so maybe we do need some definitive lines of how we wanna. Go about that.
Yeah, because let, let's just think, I, and the thing that I think about is, let's say our main street starts building up and we have shops. We have a downstairs shop and an upstairs apartment, or they live upstairs. Okay, so they live there.
It's almost that mixed use.
Oh, they don't.
I don't think our codes allow sleeping in a business upstairs.
Well, we've got plenty of homes with businesses in them.
Yeah, I mean, from that standpoint.
But yeah, we don't have a mixed use, but we're talking about doing it, we need to, it only makes sense.
Then do you split them?
Or do you have a mixed use?
Ones residential and.
Mixed use um category.
They could be bearded separately.
They, they sure could. And.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying, so you can split.
Yeah.
We got a resident and a business.
Yeah.
But then they have two meters.
So, and I, I don't know, Renee can speak to this, is how easy that is to uh make that category. Because now you're gonna have a commercial flat rate, residential flat rate, and then. Are you gonna use the same tiers? Or are the tiers gonna stay the same between residential and commercial? Are you gonna increase all your commercial tiers? Or are they gonna be the same tiers as residential? That's a question to be had.
That's why um although I have a. A fee schedule that's kind of more filled, filled out than the one I gave you tonight, but there's some discussion points, those. Those are the kind of things that from a council. From a council perspective. It will be helpful to have direction based on, you know. What, what we discuss.
And I don't know if, if it's as easy as just saying, okay, non-residential users are gonna pay five percent more. Three percent, whatever that number is, maybe we come to that, that formula, that little caveat.
And I think, um, cause this is all based on, correct me if I'm wrong. The four percent increase we talked about. Across the board, thinking of them in terms of residential usage.
Correct.
Yep. And adding fifteen new connections. For the year.
Correct, so the big thing to take away from this is, I know we're in the midst of a huge water and sewer improvements project, but. With delays and with unforeseen circumstances. The number of new users in twenty-twenty-three may not be as high as we think, so. So that we have plans, so I am taking a very conservative approach when I say only fifteen new connections this year. Fifteen new water. But.
Conservative.
It's conservative, it is. Uh, with the wastewater treatment facility setbacks, which in turn affects the whole project. The low-pressure grinders, the installation.
Sewer wise.
Sewer wise, and then the people who want to put their water and sewer in the same trench, dig once, install once. You know, it's. I don't know if we're gonna get that many people this year to hook, hook up. Maybe there's more people out there with failing wells, failing sand points, whatever it may be, and they're, they wanna hook up. I won't tell there.
So. I think you, uh, Sunny, we need to, maybe we need to touch base either with Kane with our, uh. Minnesota Rural Water Association or maybe the auditors, but that federal grant income really throws everything into, it's at eighty-three thousand. Where they came from, why, just in twenty-twenty-two, we got that payment. Are we gonna see it in twenty-twenty-three?
The ARPA payment that was put in wrong, and I did correct it, so I don't know why it's showing up.
So that's not real.
That's not, yeah, that shouldn't be there.
Which one?
The eighty-three thousand, that's the ARPA money we got. And I did try to move it a week or two ago, so I don't know why it's still showing up.
That's probably because of three oh four. The three hundred and four thousand for twenty, twenty-two's. Should be close to that two hundred and seventeen, which is in twenty-twenty-one or two hundred and twenty.
Well, that makes a difference.
So that's a big. It's good. Well, and so the other thing is, that's one thing, the other thing is this depreciation expense. We show that a hundred and twenty-eight thousand down at the very bottom. Hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars, that's the only time, the last time we did it was back in twenty-eighteen. So when I see depreciation, I see auditors. How they came up with that number.
Right.
And do they expect to see that in twenty-twenty-three is a question. Or even in the twenty-twenty-two.
Right.
Because those are such big numbers, that's what really throws. Because if you go up to the revenue side on. Twenty-eighteen was two hundred and seven thousand. Twenty-nineteen was two hundred and fifty thousand. I think we had a hot summer year. Two hundred and twenty-one thousand for twenty-twenty. Two seventeen for two twenty-one, which is a cooler. And it's gonna be three hundred and five thousand minus eighty-three, so it's two hundred and twelve or fifteen, something like that. Instead of three oh fours. Just an example, Pine Island, Plainview. They pay three dollars more in monthly basis between residential and commercial. Residential is like thirteen dollars, eighty-nine cents. Commercial was sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Industrial was eighty-one dollars.
Well, that's another thing we should talk about eventually.
Manufacturing firm, cutting, machining.
Absolutely.
And we have a couple of big businesses.
And then there's base rates.
But not, they're not making anything. I mean, shot tracing is the only thing that's making.
It's like the data center.
Absolutely.
Industrial, when I think of industrial, I think of like heavy machinery and.
Manufacturing.
Manufacture, that's kind of what I think, cause I, you know.
Twenty-five percent more from residential and commercial.
Right.
It's got my vote, but I don't have a vote, so.
Would you say the three dollars, what did you say it was between Pine Island?
This is Plainview.
For Plainview.
I gave Pine Island. It's thirteen dollars, eighty-nine cents. Residential, sixteen dollars, ninety-eight cents for commercial.
Three dollars then, yeah.
Eighty-one dollars, forty-four base fee on industrial, plus the rates. They're all that two dollar.
We have a lot of industrial there.
Think of like Lando Lakes and.
Yeah.
The canning.
Sure.
Operation in Plainview. Definitely, they're gonna use a lot of water.
Right.
Pine Island has, yeah, Lando Lakes.
Yeah.
What was it, Mid-Am and remember what we keep that here?
Yeah, that's right across from my work, where I work now. Yes, really. So lucky.
So our base rate right now is higher than those.
Yes, our base rate is.
So your big ticket items are fifty-two thousand for operating supplies. In the past, they've been. Sixteen thousand and five. And less.
Yep, and so with that, you see the, the forty thousand dollars in meters.
Yep.
So that's, uh, like I said, I got a rough average of twenty-one and twenty for an average of twelve thousand. For operating supplies. But that, those meters do cost money and, and, uh, there has been some discussion, uh, Renee, Sunny, myself about. Uh. Charging for water meters. And, and making sure that cost is. Uh, realized. It's, it's not only the cost of the meter, but the cost of, uh, public work staff time. Uh, city hall administratively, so we need to account for that and capture that. And so, so more to come with that. Uh, in the past, we've charged three fifty for a water meter, three hundred and fifty dollars. Were.
And it costs you what?
And it cost us three fifty, so it's, it's in and out, one could say, so.
Install it.
We don't install the, the actual, uh, connection, the plumbing connection. Uh, that's, that's gonna be under the plumbing code. Uh, what we do is install the technology side of it. Uh, the old meters were, uh.
How did I say it? These are FID reading?
Yes, radio frequency, yes. The new ones are cellular, so we'll actually, city staff, public work staff will go into the. The homeowner of the residence and install this, make sure it has signal and make sure it is communicating. So a little bit more on our end, but the good part about that, uh, is when it comes time to read meters, Renee can hit. Read, hit one button on her, on her desktop and bang, you got all the.
That's retroactive back on my meter?
No, no, so once we hit the twenty-year mark on the current meters. Twenty-twenty-nine.
Twenty-twenty-nine.
We are gonna want to make sure we have enough money to cover.
Okay.
New meters. And then when it comes time to read meters monthly, uh, it's just a matter of hitting the button and, and it's.
I think that's what Pine Island is going to.
Absolutely, yep.
So you said that we were charging three fifty for meters. Are we not current, or that was the old one?
Yep, that's the current fee schedule.
Okay.
It is three fifty. Uh, the, the new meter is still three fifty. But like I said, there's staff time that we need to capture.
So two hundred more appropriate then?
More discussion there, and I don't know if that's on tonight's agenda or not, or how in detail do you wanna get with that, but. I would say, so here's the other part is, now that we're gonna be required to go into someone's, uh, residence. You know, we need to do the buddy system, two people in. Uh, just talking with other towns, how they do it. Guadamingo's in the. Process of replacing all their meters right now, so two guys, two staff members go in. They, you know, make appointments with the homeowners and I think there's a lot more time involved than you think.
Right now, that's a hundred and twenty-nine visits.
Correct. Correct, and we're, we're thinking possibly fifteen this year, so.
Yeah, plus the new ones, new buildings, new construction, okay.
So, one thing I did learn researching other towns, Rochester does not charge for a meter. They do not charge. They capture that on the other end, on their, the fees, the user fees, the.
Mm-hmm.
So. Every town's different, if you look at some towns, they charge for garbage and, and storm sewer and. And water and streetlights and, and sidewalks, you know, so getting all of these towns apples to apples is.
Right, it's pretty rough.
It's, it's difficult.
All right. Um. So I guess we have. Four questions from our auditorium.
Well, and.
Historic pictures.
Yeah, well, and historically, I'm gonna say. Um, or in my experience, you don't typically budget for depreciation. It just is something that is an expense, but I don't know that you budget for it.
Or education, you said?
What tool do you have, is the Mike Babonis that can give us a better idea of? Cause he's the one that, um, the auditor also showed us, we were at loss in twenty-twenty-one. And, um. They look at twenty-twenty-one actual. Compared to twenty-twenty-two, we had less expenses, but twenty-twenty-two, they would be less too, so. But our revenues are pretty equal.
We're not budgeting for depreciation.
Why that figure is only in that one year? That's a question I have.
It's not in the budget, it's just the actual.
Right.
Which one?
But depreciation comes into.
From the audit.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That we're just capturing it in the actual numbers, we're not budgeting for it each year.
Right. I mistake, I read that, but I, I still am concerned about that. Um. That twenty-twenty-one capital contribution number.
Mm-hmm. Where, where can you do?
Twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-one.
The one twenty-eight.
The, it's showing us a negative one forty-seven or.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Because all of those, all, I mean, that would say that that's, you know, your expenses are really. Sixty-one plus. A one forty, and you know what I'm saying? It's offset by that, and it's.
Yeah, twenty-twenty-one also has that, the very bottom, a negative hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars too.
That's what we're talking about. Isn't that what you were saying?
Yeah.
And that's the risky part of setting, you know, in the past, we've set our water rates in. August of the year, that we don't get there. You know, sixteen months before we see the audit to see the effect of it.
Is there any way to get that audit? Done sooner?
Not what it takes to, to end the year out. You know, the drilling reason.
It does seem like we're just behind that year and a half or.
Yeah.
Well, I think you, I think you have to compensate and be aggressive. Um. To minimize any kind of. Shortfall. And I think, I, I would say. You know, twenty-twenty-two was, uh. A big transitional year, I'm gonna say, for the city. Um, and so there are some changes that will occur in the numbers as well. Um, and then, um. Twenty-twenty-three. I will go on a limb and say certainly I'll be accountable for this, these numbers. Um, as well as, you know, Kane is, Kane's been part of this budget thing that he hasn't been before, and so. He was, you know, extremely helpful in the, in certain areas of the general fund one hundred. And, and I know Renee, you know, digging in and, and meeting with Smith and Schaefer folk today. Um, I, I'm confident that the numbers going into twenty-twenty-three or coming out of twenty-twenty-three will be. Far more accurate, um, and more comfortable for me to live with, rather than, you know, provide you with. Information that I, we can pull out of the system, but how much faith is in it? I.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm all in favor of anything we can do to make it real-time. Automated, where you can log on, she can log on, you all log on, you see your numbers at all times. What you're responsible for, you can see it, and make sure that. You're, you're being a watchdog on it.
Yeah. And that's one of the things that we've implemented with the fire department and first responders, they're getting not only, um. A monthly report of where they're at on their budget, but the detail. Um, and I know that you had, um. In that joint thing that we had, Dan said that you and he had found errors. But so, it's not enough to find the errors, if we need to recode something, we need to. Be advised to that, so we're making the changes early on, instead of at year end, trying to figure out. Oh, where did, where did all this? You know, so.
Dan mentioned.
Time, time sensitive, you know, let's.
They have mentioned something last night too, so.
Oh.
I, you should follow up with him and see if there was anything.
Okay.
Um.
For the first responder side.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, so I think.
But they just got, Tanya just got in it.
You wanna buy something? You see your budget, you see where you're at. And then you can come to council or, look at something that you can just buy. Without the approval, you always know right where you're going to be, always see your number.
Right.
That's.
Same year.
And that's exactly when I come to a council meeting and request money, funds for something, I get the, I get the question from council. Do you have money in your budget? Well, absolutely, or, or no, I don't.
And that's right. So you can have something just like that.
Exactly.
And you're plugged right into it, and you say, this is what I got.
And this is a new thing.
It, it is very new.
And it's. It was something I struggled with when I first started, um, being on Parks Committee, not ever knowing, we would just say, Kane, do we have the money? And you're like, yeah. But we're, but we had no documentation.
And like Sunny just said, now there's a detailed report monthly that says. This many times you went to the Menards and the gas station, and so on and so forth, so. Not to get into the weeds here, but if you look at February. Uh, Fe- February's water usage, uh, we had three users. Fifteen to twenty-five thousand gallons. We have four users, ten to fifteen thousand gallons. A hundred users, five to ten thousand gallons, and two hundred and eighty-four users, less than five thousand. So. Just looking at. So, just looking at at. Right, so just looking at Sunny's number here, the green number, the grand total net effect of fifty seven. In change. Like we were talking a larger increase. Per user. Now, I I I've got four percent down here. But to make up that that fifty seven thousand, that would be a. A huge, huge increase if we were gonna do it there.
What if you did? Four and a half on the residential and five on the commercial.
Yeah, that's that's definitely a possibility is adding that commercial.
Well, and I'm going back to um in one of uh Stan Tex FAQs or whatever. Um he indicated that that water rates were expected. To increase three to five percent, right? That's why we went with the four. And maybe it's just enough to make the the change on the commercial side.
I'd prefer to keep it just because the of our water users are so many, but all that five thousand, I know it's February too. But I think of the the residents where there's one person or two people older. Age people, I think that the four and a half would be. My opinion would be hard to defend four percent, you know, we've had, we've never had a four percent, we've had threes and threes and halves for it. To me, I think we I'd rather see it on the on the commercial end.
Kane, what did you see on the, what was the adjustment from on a four percent?
Okay.
You had that worksheet.
Four percent increase. You're gonna pay thirteen cents more. Uh in your first tier, fifteen cents more in your second tier, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
So to those, to those in February, you said, correct me if I'm wrong. A hundred users in the five to ten thousand range and then two hundred and eighty four were below the five thousand.
Right.
So that's the biggest one and that that's where you see a thirteen cent increase.
Increase, yeah.
At four percent. Yeah, but the people that he's talking about, you know, with one or two aren't gonna have that either.
Okay.
So we've got some questions from you, such things to check out. We'll tweak. Some other items and. I don't wanna keep you here on my need to present that in the time as well, right?
So is your plan with your thought about the next one, pre-schedule, that's next? Are you going to put in your suggested fee or are you expecting the council to go line by line? Through the fee schedule?
Well, there there are things that I I guess, I guess when I'm looking for from council is just an up or down. You want it to stay the same, you think it can go up. So that's kind of. Why I'm thinking this should only take.
Yeah, we definitely know the.
And just so you know, I did get around to pulling, you know, I've been looking at the smaller cities and stuff, but then I thought. I'll want to see what Rogers just Julie, they have twenty pages, their fee schedule is twenty pages. Yes. And Kane just said they don't even charge for the meter, so, okay. So chicken license, do you want that to go up or stay the same?
Two hundred per license, cover attorney fees and.
Nobody will, nobody will, don't worry about it.
How many have you said?
Nobody will. They've got chickens, they're never gonna, there are chickens all over this town, but nobody's ever gonna apply for a license, whatever.
The annexation fee, I'm proposing that that should go up. I said five percent.
That's part of the already importantly annexation agreement, the four percent, I think, four percent's in the agreement.
Okay, so I need to check that again. I think, you know, the final plan. Um preliminary plat, those two things, I think you're woefully low on those. Um as they don't even cover your. Well, I can't say that, I guess, because I have. But it's um at least you have the. You know, the caveats in there that we're gonna get reimbursed for engineering and stuff and those. Clearly would come with a developer agreement as well, a developer escrow agreement, so we can stay ahead of that. The assessment search. That's, you're okay with that staying at twenty?
Do we know what Rochester charges?
Well, the assessment search is just a water assessment, right? On property taxes for water.
No, isn't it if there's a um. Like a contract.
In the past, I've just looked at their water bill and then the rest of it is usually caught when they do the county search. But.
Add on to their property taxes. Just half a dozen of them typically or whatever, but that's what they called it. Guess that's my understanding what the assessment search is for is to identify who has. Outside of property taxes, any other assessments on their properties, that's typically late or delinquent um water fees.
What if we could say up or down or stay?
ATV golf carts?
Five dollars in two years? That's funny. I never even paid attention to that before.
You're learning a lot of stuff with me. Again, I think that's, you know. How many do we have out there?
A lot.
On the year, some years we haven't had really any and some years we have a lot, but then the question is is. If you're from out of town just driving through, do you need to have that permit? And a lot of ATVs I think are thinking, well, they're licensed through the state already or whatever, so they don't pay it, so.
I don't think they have to. Cause I thought this was for golf carts. The things that weren't already licensed, I thought.
The UTVs, utilities, they had license already.
Yeah, UTV has license, I think like four wheelers, they have to have a state tag, but.
My razor has a state tag, but. Oh, I see what you're saying, like.
Yeah, cause they're already, they're already licensed.
Right, and they're. Right, so golf carts really should be.
UTVs.
Well, right, but they're already licensed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And our town is, you can drive down the streets in our town, not every community you can.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
So do we, are we changing that title and making any adjustment?
Well, I think ATVs are different, cause they're like the four wheelers, they're not the side by side, so. I could see where we definitely want them to have a. Permit or whatever.
They get stolen, you can.
Not stolen.
And so my understanding is, and this is just me, is if it can't be licensed through the state. Then it should be possibly licensed through the city. But if it can be licensed through the state, like a side by side or ATV.
Yeah, ATV has a s- you buy a sticker, your license.
If it's licensed through the state, I would say, don't try to double license.
So really, it's golf cart.
If it's a golf cart or something that's. Slow moving vehicle, I I don't know, like a.
I don't know.
A John Deere gator.
Yeah.
You're a John Deere guy. Yeah, but then again, but to to Dana's comment, five dollars for two years isn't even worth.
Sure, it covers sticker payment probably.
No, well, do we even give stickers? Oh, we do have a.
I I started printing them in house. Ten dollars, because you need five dollars at least a year.
Because you gotta order stickers and it's gonna take.
Yeah.
Your time to fill out a form or whatever, I would say.
So we remove ATV.
Golf permit, ten dollars.
Per year? I'd rather have things on a yearly basis.
Where did that come from?
That's that was originally.
I don't remember that. God, you guys, I'm not remembering anything. Yearly makes more sense, it's harder to keep track of two years, I would think. But I would. Well, with our new software system, it's in the system.
Let's go with ten dollars per year, per year.
Thank you.
It's probably easier to remind people, people. Did I do it last year or was it two years?
Like licensing your car, you know.
Bad check, okay, building permits.
Should bad checks go up? What what is a bank charge?
Who writes checks?
Yeah, who writes a check?
Our utility payers.
I don't know what banks charge for something like that. Could we?
Do we have anybody that was issued the charge for?
I think since I've started, there's only been one person that. Come back and I don't remember the charge.
Okay, I think we should keep it just in case.
If nothing else, you know, if you keep it on the list, it's a constant reminder, even if you're gonna decide no charge. I did add a couple of uh. Layers in there. On the building permits and I I looked at um kind of doing more of a an escalating. Thing as opposed to a flat fee. Because it didn't seem fair to me that, you know, if somebody's. Doing a garage for fifty one thousand versus somebody doing it for ninety eight thousand, the fee is still the same.
Let's go with that.
Burning permits, that's no charge, um camping.
We don't camp, we don't have camping anymore, not for now.
And we're.
To be, to be determined in the future.
Okay.
That's what I told the county when they called too, I said it.
Cigarette license.
What's a cigarette license? Oh, for for telling.
Yeah, most people call it. But that's gonna head into the CBD and. The CBD and THC and all the stuff she's gonna learn about when she's. On at the training.
Cigarettes or all those types of things, vapes and.
Do they have? Make it more?
Yeah.
Who sells cigarettes? To gas stations, that's it, right?
Yes, gas and go and cases.
I mean, is it coming to be more? I have no idea either. It seems like a really small number. And maybe that's fine, I don't know, but I feel like they can make a quota money off cigarettes.
Yeah, cause isn't isn't there like filing and all that that goes with it?
All for I have to do for that one is just send a spreadsheet into the county with. There's really not much on that end.
Maybe we did leave it.
It's liquor license that you have to get a little bit more involved in.
Same, okay.
We can always adjust it once we add the cannabis or. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Um, yeah, and there again, I mean, that's one of those zoning things that I, you know, I think they will. Shy on, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna advocate increasing that. Um copies.
So, one second, so the conditional use. Say I wanna file a permit, I wanna file for a conditional use permit, I pay a hundred and fifty bucks. It's not. I don't get that permit. It's not approved. I'm out the hundred and fifty, but then if I wanna appeal that and say, I want you to hear my case again, it's fifty dollars. Is that what I'm reading? Just so I understand. We didn't have a permit fee for that before, right?
Yeah, you did, but it doesn't, it doesn't cover.
No, I I'm, so we did, okay, what was it?
That is, that's.
Okay, no, I don't, I think it needs to go up.
Yeah.
Cause if you think about it, look at all the time that we spend on these. In planning and zoning meetings and everything behind it.
So CUP requires um public hearing.
Yeah.
Likewise, variances. That requires a public hearing too, correct? So variances are two fifty and conditional uses are a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, why is there a discrepancy?
They should be. The same, so I would think. If you think about it, I, first thing goes through my mind is, okay, think of how many. P and Z positions we pay for, how many council positions we pay for, and how long does it, how long do we spend? Typically on one of those, you know? I would.
We just do, make them the same at two fifty a piece?
I would go more than that.
I would, yeah, I would bump it to.
Plain view was two hundred for conditional use, variance was two hundred.
Yeah.
Again, I don't know what this year this was, but that's all for website at some point.
Maybe we.
I'd say make both of them two fifty, but.
Yeah, that's I was thinking two fifty, because I mean, by time.
I would forego the appeal because that's kind of argumentative about who causes the appeal, you know, was the guy late, person late or. Is it the P and Z that caused the appeal or delay or you didn't come to council within the time period, we extend another day and just.
I agree, maybe we just bump the price up and we don't charge them for an appeal.
Isn't, an appeal isn't. An extension.
No, there's it's appeal is saying I don't agree with with the ruling, now I wanna, I want you to hear my case again.
Right.
Paid for it, so let's raise, my thought is raise that price. So they've already paid for it and within that, if they appeal it, so be it.
I don't know, you're gonna see a lot of appeals, I feel like then.
Well, and I'm thinking.
Maybe the peel is a little amount.
Variance and appeal for two fifty right now.
Or does?
Yeah.
Well, that doesn't make any sense, variance and appeal.
And some of them, it's they they're doing a conditional use and a variance at the same time.
I take that back. The twenty twenty two is two fifty and a fifty dollar per appeal.
And I think I could be wrong, isn't, is that the one that per code? You can't do, you have to wait a year or something like that or.
Yeah, twenty twenty two has the the variance and appeal for two fifty.
Well, I would, I would have to pay for going three hundred on all of those zoning. Well, I would, I would definitely for going three hundred on all of those zoning things.
But then what about the appeal? Not do an appeal.
We don't wanna charge another two hundred dollars.
No, I I would say then just have a minimal appeal fee. Because if you don't have they, well, there's guardrails on appeals. I was just thinking, you know, how many times can they come back and waste your time?
Until they get a council, they won't.
Until they run for city council.
That would be their.
The conditional use raise a hundred and fifty to two fifty and keep the fifty dollar appeal and on the variance. Have a two hundred and fifty dollars and then add the fifty dollar appeal, which is what we have then twenty twenty two.
Is there any way that when they're filing for, this is just. When you're filing for. The combined. That could be.
Yeah, cuz what, well.
I don't know.
One piece of property, you could. I I, yeah, cuz one piece of property, you might have to. Ask for a variance and say, okay, and I want a conditional use permit.
And would that, would that really increase your work on P and Z and staff and stuff? If it was combined at one time, or would it be okay? Or would it, you know what I mean, like, cuz if it increases your work, then it makes sense to have both, but if it really doesn't increase it that much.
Well, until we have a planner on staff, we're paying. A planner to do the planning report.
And so each of them would require its own.
How much is it for that planner report? How much does San Tech charges?
Well, remember they budgeted, you know, last year, they gave us. Twelve thousand dollars, they thought, carry them through the year, and it was like four months.
Yeah.
That's like a hundred forty some dollars an hour, I think, or something.
Yeah, and I wonder if, and it's kind of hard depending on the property, you know, they.
That's why I think it might be, we need the security agreement when it comes into lots.
Yeah, developer escrow, but but then you're talking, you know, there's a difference between a developer. And just, I'm gonna say like, the the lot split we had last year. Where was just, you know. Somebody wanting to downsize. Their situation was a little different, I mean, that's.
Highly different because in that situation, I I did it. In that situation, the homeowner takes on a lot of expense and there's really nothing for the city to do other and say. Okay, here's my plan from the, from the um, what do you call them?
Architect, you know, whoever you're. Oh, the surveyor.
There's sur- surveyor. To say, here here's the, here's the actual survey that we have to have to um make this happen. That cost is upfront on the homeowner and we just have to approve it. But we're developers. Way different.
Yeah, once you, once you start getting into. You know, carving out lots, where the, you know, a lot split is just fairly simple. Fairly simple, but if you're talking about attractive land and creating lots. That's more development based and it's gonna involve planning, engineering. So those are the things that you have, you know, that we're able to recoup those and those clearly need to have an agreement.
In the last split that we had last year with with the boarding house, you know, the planning service put together two reports. At the one report, so we spent like twelve thousand dollars on those two reports, I think.
What was that?
For the animal?
Remember it was rezoning. Started out with that, then it changed, and so we. Twice, we got two planner reports about the lot split. That was city money we lost.
I don't know about the cost, but I. About that one, but I know it's it's expensive because all the burdens on the city.
Make sure it's right.
And they can walk away and they're out nothing.
But that, that. Um, I'm glad you mentioned that, cuz I'll I'll tell you, you know, all of that money that was invested. In the rezoning and stuff for that first potential buyer, the first applicant. That didn't end up buying, was still all in place. And valid for the the next buyer, you know, we worked through all of those hoops and stuff and they closed.
Yeah, they sold it.
They have a new website and everything already.
Yeah, very nice young couple, I'm very excited.
Yeah, signing up my dog. Chancho needs friends.
But there was that lot split behind um Tricia's place, right there on the corner before you cross into River Park. They did that lot split too. And that that's the situation where a homeowner just wants to split. And that's it.
Well.
Did get the the rezoning application and. We had multiple applications on that one, on the.
So two fifty and two fifty and fifty.
Also two fifty and a fifty dollar appeal.
And that can change.
Do we think two fifty is? You would go what?
But I don't have.
What's everyone happy with? Two fifty or three, I could go either way.
I guess I don't care. I don't know why that wasn't the same as variance, that doesn't make, I don't remember that, why we decided that. Cause we didn't know what we were doing. Yeah, right, that's what I mean, why would we have? But what I wanna know, again, I. I just for the. If there's a homeowner that needs to do, a homeowner, not a developer, that needs to do. To a variance on a cup, I would really like to max that out at like five hundred or something like that. Look at combined, is that possible?
Combine the.
If you have, you know, instead of paying six hundred for both a conditional use permit and a variance, which sometimes you have to do. No, but I would just say if that's possible. To max that out at five hundred instead of six hundred or no. Well, because is the planning, what I guess, I don't know if I got, maybe you answered this already and I'm just brain dead at this point, but is this. Because they have to create the ports, reports, it's still gonna be the same, still gonna cost.
Yeah, cuz I mean, worse, cuz there's gonna be more work, there's gonna be more work. So conditional use will have its set of work and a variance will have its set of work. You know, they're gonna, the planner has to.
I just didn't know if it would like cost, you know, cuz it's not, hopefully it would be one visit, one site visit, one, you know what I mean, so like that would be.
That's the same, yes.
Right, so I just thought maybe in some respects we'll be charged less because there's ones, I don't know, that's just something. That I, it would be nice if we could offer that, but. Something to think about.
Well, the conditional use permits are probably less than variances occurring.
Oh, really?
There's fewer conditional use permits, you know, it's more of a business type thing versus. Variances, there's all kinds of variances for homeowners against codes and everything, so.
But the conditional use permit is. Is also an item that needs to be tracked. To make sure that conditional use is still enforced, just like the variance, right, you have, you know, there's. Typically a variance is granted subject to conditions. So they kind of are both from a staffing. We have to, and I think, I think that, you know, still being at a hundred and fifty. Instead of getting, going to the two fifty, I I think that's just an oversight, unless you guys. Know more of the history on that, to me, it just seems, if you have, you know, these other things, the fees are two fifty and then you get that one anomaly.
It might have been, I don't remember.
So we're saying.
Three hundred, I'm fine with three hundred, I guess.
Conditional use and three hundred for variance.
So we're going three hundred for all three of them? While conditional use permit, variance and once the lot split one. That was the other.
Where is that?
Two fifty. In the middle of the second page.
Or do we just set all of those at three hundred?
That's what we just said. We're all just not, we're not, our cylinders are starting to shut down.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
And then what'd you say, Riley, fifty? I'm good with that.
And I'll double check on that, um. Cause one of them, I know there's a time, you know, you can't even apply appeal for a certain period of time.
Did we settle on the copies?
Not yet.
Well, they have conditionals.
It's a non-factor, don't you think?
Yeah, I'm sure nobody does it, can we just take the dance off here, like, we're not, we're not butt loose. Why do we have dance permit?
Well, some, some communities have fireman dances or, you know.
Let's not make them. Let's not make them come in for five dollars. For a year. Fifty dollars for a year? Well, how about just fifty dollars for a dance?
I like it.
I mean, five dollars is. I think it's something we just didn't ever change back from nineteen twenty eight when it was that.
Definitely were popular.
So are we saying fifty?
Fifty dollars per dance.
No, and to get rid of the year thing. I don't know what that says.
I I don't know how many you've done here, but I I'm okay as long as um. It's reimbursing.
My grandfather had a dog, his name was Ship. He said, whenever something was talking about how old it was, you'd always say as old as.
It's old as ship.
Been around so. Okay, environmental assessment worksheet.
Yeah, I said, that's that's fine, cuz we're still recouping those other things that could be really costly for us.
So we're saying same? Facility rental.
Here's where we're getting into it from.
Meeting rooms with kitchen, twenty five or less for two hours, yeah, I I think twenty five is way too cheap.
We just increased it last year. Last year, right? Two years ago?
Two years ago.
No, it was twenty five for two dollars or for two hours, but then we had like.
Yeah, it was over.
Rates for. Things and then it was, yeah, it was, we had different deposits for residential and non-residential and we just kind of tried to.
Remember, I remember we talked about you guys having to clean up behind some of them where it took so long and.
It's typically the hundred dollar ones. The two hour period ones. For birthday parties and anniversaries and the bigger group that takes up the whole.
Should we do fifty dollars for less than two hours?
I think it's gonna be, for some groups, that's gonna be. A challenge if they have a small group. You know. There's only five people here. For two hours and. All of a sudden, fifty dollars, that's, that's a, that's a big chunk.
We don't charge the yoga ladies or.
Like senior citizens.
The exercise group is not even charged.
I missed it.
Young and spirit, the exercise class, oh. Sorry, young and spirit?
I can't remember what they're called.
Seniors, yeah.
Young at heart.
Young at heart, yeah.
Young at heart, exercise and yoga.
So that is something we should talk about though, only because I do think that as we grow, a senior citizen center. Is probably gonna be something that we wanna incorporate into our city. And.
That might even, that might even be an organization of its own, isn't Pine Island, oh, what is it called?
Area Home Services?
Yeah, Area Home Services, they have their own building, right? That's a nice building.
Yeah, eventually, that's where we, yeah, eventually I would love to have something for our senior citizens in this community.
Should we leave the?
I would just leave, yes it is.
Cause I think, I remember us bumping these up already.
I don't think we bumped them up, we just changed the structure.
What's that?
We just changed the structure, I don't think we bumped the prices.
Oh, I thought we did.
Well, in a way, because we went away with. Eight hour one, we just went to a straight, if you're, if you're more than four hours. Cause I think it was like seventy five and a hundred or something, we just went straight across the board it.
This is gonna sound not very kind or it's gonna kind of be. But I'm not gonna lie. I don't know if our facilities are worth charging more for. I mean, that's just, like, it's not that, like, nice.
I don't know, I don't wanna come here to exercise.
Right, so I'm just like, I kind of wanna leave it and I kind of, cuz it's, there's not a lot. Do you know what I'm saying?
I do know what you're saying. And we don't get a lot of rentals.
I just.
For the city is the one that has the weekend birthday parties and anniversaries, the a hundred dollar rental, that's the one that just really the generator. Like last year we got like twelve hundred dollars.
You wanna know where I think we could make more money is the chair situation.
Well, and to me, that's like, okay, banquet chairs thirty five, I, how many chairs is that? I mean, what?
I took how many, I did this, I rented them for ties, for ties graduation, it was amazing.
Those, the ones in the hallway?
Well, just any chair, no, not the metal chairs. You do?
You talk about these chairs?
No, the ones upstairs, that's what we were told we could rent.
I always think of fold up chairs.
They rent them? I've had one person, that's it.
Yeah, Rochester Rental does a two hundred eight, I think they have the plastic ones. Really?
Anyway, I just think. Folding chairs. There's stacks and stacks and stacks of, they used to be lined up in here, oh yeah, they're right there, those.
These cushion ones.
Around the corner in the back.
All cushion. I I don't think we should rent those at all. I think when you rented or the ones you used, rented, the ones upstairs, to me, those are rentals of.
Yeah.
The ones upstairs, what's the difference, what did I rent, what's the difference between upstairs and these, they're not.
They're plastic.
They're not these, they're not these nice ones, they're the other ones, most of them are stained and disgusting. Around the corner? Okay, then the up, then the upstairs ones are what we use and they're not. They're not like, they're all banquet chairs, basically. Yeah, I thought that's what we were supposed to use, cuz it's a banquet.
You got a deal.
Are not folding chairs, if we're gonna rent folding chairs, then we need to say folding chairs. That's not a banquet chair.
Right.
Renting chairs is folding chairs.
Well, yeah, and then. And and why are we even doing that?
Why aren't we doing that?
We don't have to. But it's. We could make more money, I would, I say.
I don't have that many.
Have you ever rented a church room?
Because let's, let's say I wanna rent.
Parties that rented the chairs.
Let's say I wanted. So then someone has to come and open up.
Friday.
Yeah, yeah, do we want that headache?
Well, just like, another question is, we took it off the website, I think, but we had picnic tables for rent. But that gets to be.
Yeah, I saw that.
All of our picnic tables are gonna be metal from now after a while anyway.
Well, and that's at the very bottom of the list, there were things that are not on your list, but maybe should consider.
No, we got rid of animal license. We're not doing it, um, nobody does it.
Let's keep on finishing this up here.
Okay.
So. I would say folding chairs.
I would. Or, or just take, take them off. Yeah, because I, I would think if someone did need something like that on a weekend, then we've got staff coming in. I would just.
If we have rented these folding chairs for years.
Yeah.
Well, I could see him. At music in the park, you know, we could maybe have them available.
Bring your own and sit in the grass.
Okay. So do we wanna just take it off then, is that what you're saying?
I'd say take it off.
Okay.
And give her the chairs.
Is there ever a time that?
I've never seen the chairs out of there, have you, Jane, Kane? Outside of.
I didn't use.
Have you ever seen those used?
Yeah, I have. Have they ever been taken over like to the shelter in the park?
I think graduations, mostly.
Oh, but rentals, but not the city use, no.
No.
We're gonna leave it on and say folding chairs?
You know, we have had like.
So that differentiates those and.
People if they need them, they're there. Make more seating. Bet Carolie's done.
We have run it next year, which I can.
Park shelter. I think that prepares a bone.
I was just gonna say, that's pretty cheap.
We talked about that with Rev, it's thirty dollars and then if you wanted the restroom, there was another. X number of dollars, we talked about doing that.
Well, if we just did fifty and then automatically open the restrooms, would that work?
That just goes back to the conversation of city staff cleaning restrooms with their time or. Or having the porta potty. Contract.
Or charging fifty with restrooms.
Well, I would support doing a deposit. So that if there is any damage to.
Absolutely clean up.
Or recouping that.
How about a hundred dollars and a hundred dollar deposit?
I like it.
A hundred dollars, no.
With a hundred dollar deposit.
It's a nice park.
Park's nicer than our building.
Cause the park shelter does get a lot of use.
It does.
It gets a lot of use during the summer and the weekends, I think, jumping it to a hundred would be.
Too much?
Too much, so I think fifty would be understandable with the deposit and the restrooms are open.
What? But this is only for a reservation, anybody can go use it.
Sure, yeah.
It's just to reserve it and to have guarantee of it and to have a party, I mean, that's the only thing that we're. And have the restaurants open, I think if we're gonna open the restaurants, we have to charge at least a hundred. That's my personal opinion.
Well, and here's a case where I would say, you know, it makes sense to me that a hundred dollars for fifty if you're nonprofit. Plus the hundred dollar deposit theoretically you could get back. But that's, that's kinda.
But do we even wanna get into the nonprofit thing? We just set a straight fee, so we, we know what it is. And. The bathroom thing, I, I think about that because that.
That was a problem.
Yeah, and the amount of time it takes to clean those bathrooms, so we're paying a staff an hour.
Well.
Uh, yeah, at, at least, there, there's an hour for. For that, the bathroom cleaning.
How about if we do a stepped approach, we take. I, I think we should get to the hundred dollars, but I think it would be, until we get our sewer system. And new stools and everything, nice, then I think we should just maybe jump it from thirty to fifty. And when we get the restrooms converted to bathrooms, then we charge a hundred dollars with a hundred dollar deposit.
So we won't open the bathrooms that was here. What about your music in the parks, there's no porta potties?
Boy, it'd be nice to have restrooms. As a city function.
Sure.
Next year it might be different with the business donations, whatever, whoever the group is that.
Well, I think we have to, if we set a price, if we open a bathroom, one year, we have to keep it open because people will rely on that.
Well, people do rely on bathrooms, whether we give them the key to open it and lock it back up, there are certain groups that. Are very adamant about having the bathroom.
Hand washing, when you're, when you're dealing with food, that's the thing. It's not really even safe if you don't offer the bathroom, that's what bugs me.
I like your hundred and hundreds.
Okay, so.
Forget the council.
I like the stepped approach and, until a point where you have water and sewer. But I also, I wanna consider. The amount of time it takes for our staff, we have to build that in if they're gonna have bathrooms. At the end of minimum, we have to build that in, even now, I think.
That's what the hundred dollar deposit would help cover.
No, cause they get it back.
They get that back though, yeah.
A deposit you get back.
You have to clean it, we're not gonna get it back.
Excessive cleaning, but if they just have to clean, and that's the other thing, if you're gonna offer a deposit, then you have to make a contract kinda thing and have stipulations, but. A deposit you get back unless it's excessive and things are damaged, not just for cleaning, you gotta clean.
But isn't, isn't that a. You never clean that facility if it's. Locked up all the time?
Correct, if it's locked up, there's no usage, we don't need to clean it.
See, this just, to me, this seems like, this is part where you're, with the parks, you know, like mowing and stuff, this is just part of maintaining that park. Just clean the bathroom when it's used.
That's a whole nother discussion.
Well, and I, I'm just thinking how fast fighters can build. And then I don't know if we have other curters going in and, uh, anything, I mean, there should be. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
So if we were to. Drop the hundred dollar deposit until. So let me just start, I would say, I would have no problem increasing it from thirty to fifty with no deposit. And if they want to use the restrooms, cause we got a porta potty in there.
Maybe you charge them those.
Then charge a hundred dollar deposit, then ask for the hundred dollar deposit, we'll open the restrooms.
No, cause it's, yeah, a deposit gets given back.
Yeah, and we're still cleaning.
So why are we asking for it then?
In case they wreck something, then you don't give it back, a deposit's to cover damage. And excessive cleaning, like if someone goes in there and like has. A situation.
Spread pieces of everything.
Yes, that, you would not give their deposit back, if they just wanted to go to the bathroom. And leave, like a normal person, might drop a paper towel on the ground, you don't keep their deposit.
So maybe it's, maybe it's this, so fifty dollars if they don't want bathrooms open. They want the bathrooms open, it's.
Another fifty.
Eighty. You know, I don't know, Kane, is it an hour to clean toilets?
I may have, told my words wrong, yes, I would agree with that.
Fifty and fifty, I think, fifty for the rental of the park. Fifty to open up the bathrooms. We're back to a hundred, I just like a hundred, eighty's a weird number.
To the new restrooms, we can increase that. So it's fifty. With additional fifty for restrooms.
Um, I'm just gonna throw this out there, I, I like a deposit regardless of whether they're, because. Because they're taking away a potential opportunity for somebody else, right? So, that, and then if they cancel, then.
And they have to cancel within a certain number of days, because let's say you wanna have graduation at the park and it's booked. I can't, I can't book it, someone has it booked and at the last minute they cancel, they're out nothing.
Fifty dollar deposit. Well, they would be out their rental fee. Cause that's gonna be paid before.
Yeah, I guess that, that's where I'm going, do they lose their rental fee after X days prior to the, the rental date?
Yeah, we do not have a cancellation policy currently, that's a good idea.
Within what?
Just make a cancellation policy. Cancellation pol- policy and a deposit. Like.
So fifty and fifty, and you want the bathroom, then it's another fifty and another fifty.
Without bathrooms, a hundred with bathrooms. And then you're gonna also have a deposit. Deposit fifty?
If you don't want the bathrooms, if you do want the bathrooms, it's a hundred.
Okay, so it's gonna equal the fee, okay? Deposit equal fee.
And come up with a policy of. Of deposit.
If faxing. Dollar a page.
So if they, if they do. Rent the shelter with a restroom, you'll give them a key so they can open it, pose it or bring the key back in the drop box.
And that'll be in the agreement.
So we don't have to have public works or calling the mayor up and say, come on and lock it.
Oh, we'll leave that clause in. We'll leave that clause in.
Thank you very much, cause they do call.
You worry about a key?
The, the key's fine, if people come here, Renee can give out a key.
And if they don't bring the key back, then we keep their deposit. And that covers our cost of getting a new one.
And if they don't lock, lock it up, they lose their deposit.
Okay.
Now, faxing. Dollar a page?
Leave it on there, it doesn't. It's a non-factor.
Fire response team.
I don't know what this means.
That's what happens when you call nine one one, the fire department can charge three hundred dollars minimum.
And are you guys charging, this is not the fire department, this is first response team, are you in, are you saying that's fire department as well?
It's, it's fire, I, I've got the old sheet, it says fire.
Yeah, it says fire response here. So that.
So who's.
So is that first responders or is that just fire, so let's say I didn't get a burning permit, or, well, I don't care if I got one or not and my fire's out of control.
And we get called.
You guys get called, it's gonna cost me three hundred bucks.
Fire would bill that. Yep, first responders do not bill.
So who's getting the money?
Who's getting the money?
They go to Tilly's.
What do you mean, who gets the money?
Ego?
There's been a lot of discussion on the mayor association, which look quite like, or like members like about. How do people charge, how do they get their money back? There's a lot of cases, either we don't charge or they don't pay, so they have the city clerk contact insurance company. And to file a claim against the insurance company for that individual to get paid. Is what I've seen.
Just fire.
Times, just fire, first responder.
Are you asking where does that money?
Yeah, if you're billing it out, you send in somebody an invoice, they're paying it.
I imagine it go to the city.
Doesn't happen very often.
I don't think it happens very often, yeah.
Last year we had a person that survived, so I don't think.
Sometimes the calls are canceled when they go out.
So today was a Lyft assist. I doubt we billed for that. I know we didn't bill for it.
That's more of a first responder type call.
It, it turned into that, today it wasn't, but it got called out fire. So just because you call out something as a medical emergency. Depending on the caller, the dispatcher, they could call it as fire. Like Ryland said, though, you could get canceled en route. So nobody gets charged or billed.
It's typically. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's typically for those situations where it's an insurance claim.
Correct, your house is on fire, you're gonna have a claim. In your insurance, in your policy, there's a fire department. Line item to get reimbursed, so.
And just to be clear, the fire department should not be invoicing, it should, they should be telling. City staff so that we invoice and it gets tracked in the books.
Correct, and like, to Ryland's point, I don't think there's been many billings, period.
Same thing you like when you assist Pine Island for a mobile accident.
Absolutely, yep.
You don't get paid for that either.
Correct.
But we could, or should.
Is that part of mutual aid thing though?
Yes, and with mu- and with mutual aid, I. Had to look into that.
Thing is to them?
Uh, maybe that plays into it, mutual aid.
We're digressing. Okay, so. We're gonna leave that same.
I'd like, I'd leave it, but just put some processing in place. Or to make sure it's in place, I should say, okay. With the fire department in your discussions. Food permit, gambling license, charge hauler license, what's that one? Garbage hauler license for business. So from what I've seen going on around here is that. Waste management handles the residential, but LRS handles the commercial. And we don't have a commercial agreement. But our, our waste management is just strictly residential. So the businesses, is that what this is for, what's this garbage hauler license?
Yeah. To me, it's a garbage truck, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if.
Like private business. Hauling stuff, I don't.
Would, would this be for LRS or waste management or?
That's what I see in that.
X, Y, Z garbage company?
But if that's the case. I would.
Pump it?
Bump that way up.
Yeah, but.
They give us a better rate.
Right.
I don't think we should do that.
Right. They would just pass anything that.
Know what it is, we'll also take it off. If somebody comes in and says, hey, you took my license, I need to, I need to, okay, we'll give you one, a hundred dollars. Garden plots, that's kind of a parks committee. Gathering permit, I think is fine, grading permit.
A question, garden plot, we rent out garden plots?
Or they make recommendations for council issues.
Gathering permit. Help me with this one, so if I wanna have a graduation at my house, I have to pay a gathering permit?
If it's over a hundred people for a period of time. It's gonna help the court or the wardens.
Would this be same as a dance?
If you're parking cars privately during Gold Rush, you get a good, did you get a gathering permit?
Oh, that makes sense.
Or if you're doing a garage sale during.
Or if you have vendors on your yard, right?
But then a garage, a garage sale, you're not gonna have a lot of people on your property.
No, that's just during.
Oh, during Gold Rush.
The gathering permit is only during?
No, no, for garage sales, we're not only require. A gathering permit during Gold Rush, if you're doing a garage sale, otherwise.
Normal garage sale outside of Gold Rush is, no charge.
Okay, so I think we need to specify that. So gathering permits only during Gold Rush. Otherwise, there's no gathering.
Yeah, yeah, is there though? I think there is because like we have, there are people who've had huge. Yeah.
And he did have one.
And a gathering permit. When it's a big.
So who's gonna count to a hundred?
It depends if I'm invited or not. If I'm not invited, I'm counting.
I'm sorry, I just pulled out a turn there, I'm sorry.
Other course, trying to count heads. They may not come back.
Take your glass. So I don't. Is this, does that make sense to have a gathering permit?
I'd say for big.
Like a block party, I could see because you could.
No, it's not.
Well, I mean, the garage sales during Gold Rush.
Yeah, but we're talking about the regular one.
I guess.
The Gold Rush gathering permit isn't on here.
Yeah, it's not really specified.
We're talking about specifying.
So if we just, my thoughts exactly Dana, if, if we just put Gold Rush out there, we're, we're good. Rating permit.
Check in the ordinance for a gathering permit too. Because we do have something, like if you have a party.
As long as we're doing, you know, recouping some of our costs, but there again, that might be one of those two fifty that needs to go to three hundred. Just to stay consistent with how we deal with the other ones.
But this is for a development only type thing?
Commercial and.
Okay. Reading site, okay.
So wait, I back up, so those two things, are we going to three hundred to stay consistent?
Minimum.
Both of them.
Hauling permit during Gold Rush, five bucks? I think that's. Cause it, it's not worth your time.
We only get like maybe five and it's for the people that you guys called that have come, their own vehicles to go and do it, so.
Do we care then, I guess? No, I mean, do we, do we care if we bump it or leave it? Leave it? Yeah, cause I think, cause if we make it too high, they're not gonna wanna do it. I, I'm good with keeping it.
Investigative fee.
What's investigative fee? Is that if they don't have a dog tag or something?
If we're investigating somebody or we gotta pay.
Are you chief investigator? Oh, no.
No, he's the.
Sunny, you're the investigator.
He's the enforcer.
Do we, do we want that?
Of what?
Investigative fee?
What's that? I think it's if somebody puts in like a request for information, we charge them fifty dollars. I don't know, that's my impression, but.
Think of the planning and zoning.
But don't have a, that's covered under, um, information.
Yeah, freedom of information.
Freedom of information, is that on here?
And that's.
Sense of page or something.
Yeah, that's just separate, separate thing that's not set by your, no, cause it's not.
Are we saying scratch it? Cause we really don't know what it is?
I'll tell you what it is in Rochester in a minute.
But what are we investigating?
Well, part of it is, okay, so in Rochester, like they would do investigations for like, um. The liquor licensures. Making sure that those, those applicants are, you know. Yeah, yeah, and they, of course, they have their own police department and, and. Of course, we use, uh, we use the county, so.
Scratch it.
Liquor license. That makes sense.
Are those accurate? Uh, I told, we set our own fees.
You what?
We set our own fees, so that's what you guys have, and we went and decided.
Yes, I wouldn't.
You want businesses to come in?
Okay, okay, no. Here's a question, I'm just gonna throw this out, you can think about it. If, can we have somebody? Get approved for a liquor license even if they're not yet ready to use it?
I don't, I would say, well.
You, you don't have to answer tonight.
Think about it though, cause why, why would I wanna go forward with purchasing or leasing if I can't get a liquor license?
Right.
Now, one thing that I did learn is they do have to have a physical address for the building. So if it's just something that they're thinking of doing and they don't have an address, they can't apply for one.
Maybe, maybe we put it in a, in policy or process that it's contingent on a business. And within so many days of.
Liquor license with property address or something.
Yeah.
Well, it's on the application, they have to have it. Um, they also have to have liquor liability insurance, which is another big cost for them, so. I don't think we'll get too many of them that wanna do it ahead of time, but there is some people that are looking because we are limited on how many licenses we can have too.
Yeah, I think if we just. Oh, we good?
We're good.
All right, lots split.
We move that to three hundred?
Yeah, there's, here's the one I don't get, mobile home parks and recreational camping area.
Yeah.
I don't get that. So if I wanted.
Oh, it's probably Phillies.
And are these annual or is this a one-time deal?
I, I don't know. I inherited.
It's never been enforced, no.
Okay, just get rid of it, but.
What? Okay, but that kinda speaks to.
Did we make this with the, what, was the little small community? Tiny homes?
The tiny home.
Does that have to do with that?
No, it's no.
Beats to what?
But, um, this also kind of speaks to the business licensure thing. You know, that isn't on our list, but I think we shouldn't have on our list. Just like with the kennels and stuff like that. Okay, so. Okay, note republic, that's on there, but no charge. Pedler solicitor's fee.
So what is that if you wanna go door to door and sell?
If you wanna get rid, sit on bay on your front porch, ask if they have a peders fee.
Yeah.
Can we raise the price to a hundred dollars?
Excellent idea. Hundred dollars.
Property cleanup. Is that us doing it?
Yes.
Public works.
Fifty dollars an hour, yeah.
And this is like if something gets reported.
So in the past, there's been a few properties that we've. That letters have been sent out, you know, please cut your grass, please maintain your property, whatever the codes are. And then. Seems like three months later, we go out and clean up the property, mow the property.
I'd give you fifty bucks an hour to mow mine.
I was gonna say, we need to increase that quite a bit.
Absolutely.
We need at least double it.
Well, and you gotta remember too, that by the time this happens, they've probably received already. Two or three letters.
I'd say a hundred bucks an hour. You gotta make it painful.
So is, here's the question though, is that a hundred dollars per hour? Plus the cost of. The maintenance personnel and that's. Or is that?
I think we just work that in. So, cause who's gonna wanna divide that out?
Let's say it's a hundred dollars.
Let's just make it a straight P.
So I know in the, in the past too, like, uh. Coming up with a rate schedule for certain equipment. A mower is a hundred dollars an hour, a truck is a hundred, uh, Bobcats one fifty. Uh, and then list labor hours too.
Well, but here's the thing, you, you don't want them using our equipment without one of our guys.
Correct, correct. Yep, so exactly that. It, it's one hour job for a mower and it's a one hour job for a person, so it's. You know. Combined, I guess you could call it.
How about if we just eliminate public works to it and just say reimbursement? For equipment and hired service, just hire it out every time.
Absolutely, if the job's too big for us, we can't handle it, whatever it may be. Tree trimming, lawn removal or.
But do you think you get, but do you think you get reimbursed? Some people have.
Well, that's where the service.
That's the issue. What if you don't get reimbursed? And I will ask this.
Put all the taxes.
Oh, yes, yeah, we assess. Okay, I, I support that. What I also think we should do is make sure that this isn't a need-based thing, physical. Based thing and make sure that we offer in that letter we send.
Yeah, like a shut-in or.
That we offer the, that we offer, um, resources to make sure that they, they. And ha- and ha- and make sure they know that they can ask for help, cause there are, we have our resources out there that will come and do this.
We don't wanna put extra burden on someone.
We absolutely, we will have the resources, that's what we're hoping to do is gather those resources.
But I think to the point of, of whether our staff cleaned something up. Or we hired out, I think we still need to have an hourly rate. To refer to if it's our staff.
Right.
Absolutely.
And I, and I think. Yeah, I support that because I don't want it always hired out. I think, you know, we.
If we have the bandwidth to do it. And the, and the tools. So that rate.
So a hundred dollars. Per man, per hour. Or. Or hired service.
Sunny, I'll get you that rate sheet that lists our different equipment. And.
Because here's the thing, if it's, if it's a public safety thing. Then it's on the city kinda sorted to do that as well.
True.
So.
It's a hundred dollars per hour or?
Per man.
Or woman.
Or woman.
Per person.
Per person.
And, and or, cause it could be a combination.
And or.
And or. Contracted rate. Right? And so maybe this is one of those things, if there's a, a quick policy around it or something. Um, recording fee.
I think we should be turning it, but I don't know. For most of like, when we have to record variances or whatever. But now that we're, but now that we're increasing the. We pay, we pay forty six dollars when we have to record it with the county? How do we recoup that then? Is that just gonna be maybe because we re- increased the variance?
No, I think that's.
Part of this.
Recording twenty five dollars.
Eastman's and stuff like that.
Yeah, so do we?
So the county cost, I mean, that's okay, I think twenty four for our administration and the county cost was char- probably varies every year.
Right.
Let's say it's a, a lot split, so it's being recorded. Do we just, do we wanna build these recording fees into those? You know, cause we raised the rate, do we just build it into that? And not have yet another thing we have to remember to put on, that oh, by the way, it's gonna. It's, this is your fee plus you've got a recording fee. Is there ever a time where it's just a recording fee?
Pro- or opposite, they, when you have the recording fee because that didn't pass the assess, or it didn't pass the variance and the stuff. So you're not always gonna.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Can't believe I just thought of that.
If we do that cost security agreement too, that recording fee could come out of.
But that's only for developers.
That's not, you know, like. The resident that.
Whenever you're talking more, you're not gonna do that for residential or?
Well, doesn't make sense to do it for residential. In my view, cause it, they're not gonna have the money to do it. They may be scrambling. They may be scrambling to come up with a lot spit fee to be able to sell off that and whatever. I don't know.
Probably could, I would just say, okay, it's passed, now you owe forty six dollars too.
Or do we just leave it?
I would just change the word and to plus.
So you say that again, to change it to or?
Plus.
Okay.
Okay, right away, right away permit twenty five.
And what does that mean?
Yeah, what is this one?
If anybody wants to plant trees, shrubs, landscape in the right away.
What if they wanna put that second driveway in? Does that fall under this? Okay.
There are only a lot more driveway per, per the ordinance. So this is the right way, that's in our codes right now, but if you wanna plant trees or. Shrubs, flowers, anything landscaping in the right ways. You ask, you have to permit out in the city.
And is that just mostly to have that? Known that if we're gonna do work in the right way, they have this, they have a, a structure or not a structure, but they might have something there that they've done. Okay.
If they put it in the right way, then that means. Or down when they put in fiber optics or anything in the right way. It just makes them aware that they could need to permit.
Okay, so it's.
I think it's fine, leave it.
Signs and zoning permit, two dollars per square foot. Or side.
That, um, the only question I have with signs is why does this hold true for? Um. Um. Yeah, that's planning and zoning question, never mind.
Street alley. Vacation.
There again, that's a two fifty, it should go three hundred.
Yep.
Yeah, three hundred. Yeah. And then variance and a few recovered that, you know, one thing I will bring up. It's something for us to think about, and we don't have to do it tonight. But even like from a planning and zoning perspective, we talked about putting keys in the things that are required to do. So for instance, blacktop. Or planting trees or whatever it is. So they've got a certain amount of time, and if they don't do it. Then they start accruing. Lines.
Ah.
We have to build that in, cause otherwise.
That's almost a different, that's almost like a fine schedule, but in their.
Right.
Instead of a fee schedule.
Well, I, I see it as a, as part of our fee schedule.
Yeah, but like in a fine.
Yeah.
Like section.
Yeah.
It, it should almost be like in the penalty within penalty section of your.
Yep, of your.
Of your ordinance.
Or, yeah.
Something to work on for twenty twenty four, eh?
Another thing to add to next year's list.
Okay.
We're winding down and then. Here we go, Kane, we're actually at the water thing. Are you waiting for this section, I'm sorry?
No, it's, it's all good stuff.
So then, just one thing I would, let's jump down to the zoning district change. That application fee is two fifty as well, or we're going to three hundred?
I think so. They're, they're all three hundred then, right?
And then. Just. These last items, it's kind of a yes or no question, animal license tags, no business licenses.
Not doing it, no, I don't think, are we?
No.
No, but we do have calls, how many businesses do you have in town? And that's like. Hmm, I don't know.
I was gonna say twenty, thirty eight.
So.
Those are non-residential. Oh, water accounts.
That's the time I counted like nineteen or twenty here, couple years ago.
No, I think. It would be good to have s- something or else, make them register their business.
Well, I think we need something too, cause it will help us with making sure they're in the correct zoning.
You know, someone could open any business they want anywhere. If we're not tracking it.
Well, look, I think let's. Twenty twenty four. Because I think it needs to be done properly.
Hmm.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, there, yeah, there needs to be some guardrails around it.
And, and, and a way to go back and be like, hey, if you're a current business, we're gonna ask, you know what I mean? We need that.
And that may be a project for the year.
Yeah, yeah, right. But yeah, it is a license in your ordinance, just. It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was that?
It's in the ordinance, so that we need to have a business licensing, even though we never charged them.
Yeah, I thought I. Yeah.
Seed coming twenty twenty four.
Yeah, rental.
Rental of what, what does that mean?
And house rentals.
Oh, is that what that means?
Resident. Rentals.
Rental homes.
Units.
Rental unit.
Oh.
Rental properties.
Rental properties, is that usually a different licensure?
Yep.
Yeah. Like, is it in our code?
I know the county requires like occupation. Um inspection and all that too.
Right.
So that should all.
Yep.
So are we doubling up on them? If the county's already doing it?
Well, the county charges us.
Well, the county charges the homeowner.
Oh.
Um. You have to, a rental certificate, it's called, they have to have a rental certificate or before they can. Have a place for rent. And they can get in a lot of trouble if they don't.
Is that through the county or is that just?
That's through the county.
So that is that.
The county health department.
Um.
That's a good question.
Good question, I gotta, I gotta find out, cause actually just, just had this conversation the other night.
So we get to know, cause I've had some calls on it and like.
Yeah, with Jody, actually.
Okay. Picnic table rentals?
No.
No.
Cause they're gonna be fixed in the ground, right?
Well, they're heavy.
Kennel license?
Kennel license. I think we should do that.
Yes.
Yeah.
So if they'd get a kennel license, that's separate from a business license.
Right.
So it's two things.
So how big's a kennel?
See, we had one, we had one before and it was super wonky, because it was like if your dog had puppies. Then, or if you had more than, I think it was literally three dogs, and that's just silly, cause. Lots of people have three dogs, you know what I mean? So we have to find it.
I would say s- a step based on numbers.
Okay.
You know, cause a, a big kennel. You would think would pay more than.
I would say, let's research that.
Well, and you remember I gave the, the heads up on the animal house, that this could be company.
Yeah, this will be a twenty of twenty four thing, cause I, before it was just weird.
Okay.
It was, we took it off, cause it was worded, in a way that was just like.
We're gonna pay attorney a lot of money.
Yeah. Oh, okay. And.
I can track that here.
Kane's got a calculator out, he's got this all figured out. Cross the board.
Well, tell me we're in the black.
I, uh. Hmm. I, I, I'm not gonna lie, I, I don't know exactly how towns do this, I really don't, um. I looked at other towns in the area, I've seen what they've done over the years. Rochester adopts like a five year plan. Some towns do a two or a three. We haven't, historically, it's been three percent or three and a half percent. Uh.
Based on what? I mean, that's. Based on what?
Is that, is that inflation, or is that cost of living?
That's just my question.
Is that, is that what three percent is?
In the past, that's what's kept us above the water line.
You know, and I, I've asked, uh, our engineers, Stan Tech about it, as well as like, how, how would you guys come across this? What would you throw out for a number and? Uh. You guys know in like the general fund, we raised our, our utilities expenses to twenty percent, right? Heating, electricity. Gas for the vehicles, everything, there's an increase on certain things, so. Uh. I broke it out into a four percent increase and an eight percent increase. Uh. And, and we can go anywhere, we can really go anywhere in between there and. Uh.
Eight seems like a lot.
Eight does seem like a lot, Rochester doing five percent for the next five years.
Each year.
Each year.
Woo!
They pass a resolution for six years?
I think it's five, I think it's five years.
It's a resolution that says it for. So everybody knows exactly what that rate.
I like that idea, I like that of having that plan.
Water and sewer.
No, RP with the app, they have people that can do this, that's their full time job is to.
Right.
Speculate rates and increases and.
Right.
Right? You guys get me and. And predicting my little spreadsheet here, so. Uh. One thing earlier I touched on too, is the amount of connections, the amount of users. Uh, as that goes up, more users, more fees. More usage, more chemicals, more pumping, more pump runtime, more breakdowns, more. Maintenance, it's all, it all goes hand in hand.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. And of course, we, we are adding, uh. We've got thirty two more new fire hydrants, hundred and twenty five connections, some valving, uh. There will be an increase. Maybe not so much in twenty twenty three because of the setbacks, but. Twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, future growth. That, that's the wild card, we don't know the growth.
Mm.
Portion of it. And we don't, we don't know the commercial growth either, if we get somebody in here, a large water user. That's gonna put a strain on the system and, and they'll. Throw off our calculations and our, our planning, so.
So are you, if you, just for discussion, you're saying four percent, so the base rate is four percent? And then those increment intervals would go up four percent too?
Yep, so, so like I said, a majority of people use less than five thousand gallons. This last month, February, two hundred and eighty four. Of the three hundred and eighty five users. Use less than five thousand gallons. I'd say that's your majority.
And that would be a thirteen cent increase?
That'd be a thirteen cent increase. On your tier. Which is per thousand gallons, so instead of three twenty five per thousand, you'd pay three thirty eight per thousand. So.
Per year.
Per month.
Or, no, I mean.
Hundred thousand.
I mean.
Thousand gallon.
The in, the increment, are, are you suggesting we kinda do like Rochester and it's? We're gonna say for the next three years, we're gonna raise it this percent every year.
I'm, I'm not comfortable with saying three years out, I'm really not, I'm more comfortable saying.
Right now.
We've done three and we've done three and a half historically. Uh. And now that we've got some. Uh. Better accounting practices and whatnot. And being, uh, aware of the budget myself. You know, there's a lot of things that are happening here that, that make. Make our jobs easier, so.
Yeah.
Uh. Think if we just. Baby steps, take baby steps towards this.
Because our expenses could go.
So the four percent here is.
We need to be able to.
Yeah, and, and historically, I, I think we've, we've said it and it's been, uh, publicized in the sewer. Frequently asked questions is. Water rates typically go up three to five percent per year.
Mm-hmm.
So it should be known. So how would you?
So.
Commercial then. If we, if we did that, I think we should do a some, I think we should start doing it now.
A commercial rate. So. I. I think you. I think you really make an increase there, I think you go. Uh. Across the board, do four percent everyone across the board, but your commercial people, I say. You pay. Five to ten percent more than your residential counterpart. That's the price of doing business in Orinoco.
And that's non-res, we're just gonna call it.
Non-residential.
Residential.
For now, and we can expand to industrial or light manufacturing or hospitality.
So, did you say four to five percent increase? Or did you say more? Or i- above everybody else?
Above everyone else, yep, that, make that commercial rate.
You're saying like nine percent?
No.
A nine percent increase from the twenty twenty two rate.
Right, for commercial users. And then four percent for. Residential users.
Okay.
Say it again, just to make sure.
So the number I'm throwing out is four percent for residential users.
Mm-hmm.
Four percent on your facility charge and four percent on your tiers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? I would say a suggestion, a starting point for commercial users or non-residential users. Would be an additional five percent.
In addition to the four plus five?
In addition to the four percent.
Nine percent.
Yep, so in Orinoco. Non-residential pays five percent higher rates than. Residential. That's, that's the, the difference between the two rates.
What if we did four and four? So five.
So that'd be, the base rate would be. Uh-huh. Only a dollar more. Nine percent of eighteen eighty three. Is twenty dollars and fifty two cents. That doesn't seem like it's. I don't know.
It, it, it doesn't, I, I just threw that out there for conversation, five percent, I. I think some towns, we mentioned earlier, Plainview and Pine Island are potentially charging. Twenty to twenty five percent more for a non-residential user.
I think we should. Follow suit. Maybe not quite that high if we don't want to right yet, but. I definitely think we should.
So see a twenty.
What if you did just twenty five bucks? Flat rate. Base rate, starting out for commercial people. And then we did. You know, the, uh, nine percent on top of. Now that may just not, may not be enough.
We just, just throw around the number ten percent here, you take eighteen eighty three times ten percent, you're only looking at a buck eighty eight.
Yeah. So you do twenty five percent, it's four dollars and seventy cents, right? So it. Gets. It's only.
Twelve percent increase.
Three dollars.
Yeah.
A four to eight percent, no. No, sixteen. Four and a twelve percent for total sixteen percent. Times eighteen eighty three is twenty one oh nine. Alright, yeah.
No. Cause nine percent was twenty fifty two.
Let's see, times twenty five percent is.
Twenty one eighty four, okay. That's sixteen percent above eighteen eighty three.
Was twenty one.
Eighty four.
Thank you.
Put with the base.
It'd be the base for a non-residential, decide to do that.
And then do you wanna go up on there? Per, on there. Per gallon as well?
Yes. Yeah, so we raise. Each one of those.
How about if we did a? No, we don't wanna. I was gonna suggest using, instead of four percent. Go to three or three and a half and go another percent or two higher on non-residential.
Well, here's the thing, the deficit you're trying to make up is fifty seven thousand dollars.
Right.
And that's at the four percent. For.
The numbers are right.
Right.
Right, that's at a four percent increase with fifteen more connections.
Right.
So how would we approach? Well, on residential user, that the rate increase. Who are we gonna send that to, we have a good list?
I do. Yep. I, like I said, I report every year what we use for non-residential users. Annually. So all the churches, the gas stations, I have their annual usage for twenty twenty two.
And what?
And you would be able to tell what category they're falling in, right? Or are they all gonna be at the?
I have no problem with that. I think that we're, we're doing the right approach because we're, we're building revenue. And our water utility, because we are gonna have to have another well or another storage tank.
Absolutely.
That's inevitable.
Absolutely.
We won't generate enough millions to generate it, but we're, we're making a dent in demonstrating to. Whoever we borrow the money from, that we've, we're in a good position, good positive position to pay it off or whatever occasion.
And we could potentially come to the March council meeting with some recommendations of. Industrial or light manufacturing or commercial or non-residential, different rate structures.
Yeah, definition of light industrial and industrial maybe, I don't know. Yeah, but there's other, out there on the cities right now have that information for you. You can use.
That would probably need to go in our code then too, right?
Right, I mean, you gotta go with what, what we got in cold right now.
I'm sure it's in there, yeah.
And so like I said, last year, we had this conversation was, instead of going to two different brackets, residential and non-residential. We decided to just add more brackets to capture the higher usages. So, that's the approach I took to this year, twenty twenty-three is. An increase across the board, capture everyone. Now, going to a commercial, I think that's a great idea. I think you could, you could definitely.
I, I, I definitely think it's the right thing to do, just where we're at and getting ready for twenty twenty-four. Even twenty twenty-three for that matter.
And, and so that's the thing I can do is I have everyone's monthly bill for twenty twenty-two, all the commercial users.
Yes.
So I could theoretically say, here's a ten percent increase, what it would reflect in twenty twenty-two. Here's a twenty percent increase in twenty twenty-two. I mean. But with that, you know, there's forty thousand dollars in meters that are making up that fifty-seven thousand deficit, so.
But we're getting, hey. They're getting that money.
Yep, the, they will get paid back. It may not all be this year. But, a few years from now, it, it will happen. But then again, we're gonna have another, another purchase of meters with. Instruction and new connections, so.
Yeah, we, we have to stay ahead of it.
Let fifty-seven, maybe I'm thinking this the wrong way, Sunny, but I don't. It's more like seventeen to me, I guess. Knowing that those meters will get sold and installed.
Like a little bit of a loan to our son.
Haven't you already built into that some of that, those sales on the water meters?
See, on the, on the top side of that, we didn't, Sunny. There's a column there that, that says two hundred dollars for revenue. And that almost needs to be that forty thousand plus staff timing, time involved.
Well, okay, and looking at the water meters, okay. You use the two hundred dollars from last year. As a budget. Right?
Yeah, and, and the previous year was two hundred and two fifty and two fifty and.
Okay, but if we're talking fifteen new connections. We, that number two hundred should have been fifteen times whatever.
Whatever we decide for the, the meter price per unit.
What did you decide? Is that on here?
We haven't got to that, Sunny.
Oh, okay. Okay, but that number will change.
Yes.
Okay, great. Got it.
So for discussion point on the meter. Uh, three fifty covers the meter for us. But staff time, including here at city hall and, and public works time. Uh, you could easily add a hundred dollars to that. Fifty on the public work side of things and fifty at city hall. So that number could be four fifty or.
I think it should definitely be four fifty.
And, and now some of these are gonna require a little bit more time on our, on our part. Scheduling with the homeowners, scheduling with the plumbers. Uh, it's two of us now going into a, a private property. It's, you know, it's, so maybe that number's not quite. Maybe four fifty's not the number, maybe five hundred's the number.
I think maybe.
We could do four fifty this year.
Yeah, and then you would get a better idea next, yeah, better idea next.
There is gonna be a learning curve with this new technology and just.
These schedules are made to be adjusted. I would just hate to come out with it. Yeah.
So four fifty times fifteen new connections, a conservative number, sixty-seven fifty. And that's what we could put into that water meter line item. That helps out a little bit.
It's all. A puzzle that comes together.
Just connection fee, reconnection fee, fluid fill, pool fill.
The pool fill I think should be more.
I advise.
The one last time I did one.
I advise homeowners to use their garden hose. Cause it's, right now it's, right now it's three dollars and twenty-five cents for a thousand gallons. So say they got a five thousand gallon pool, I mean, it's sixteen bucks and change. Why would they? Go the other route.
But they can get it done right away.
Absolutely.
But I, I've seen the fire department, like our neighbors have to run the holes all the way around the house and down the yard.
Yep.
And those, I think, should make a lot more money.
Yeah, I know if somebody doesn't have city water and they don't wanna use their well.
Right.
To fill their pool.
That's cheap then. As far as I'm concerned.
Right, a hundred dollars is cheap for the fire department to, to do all that.
Well, so. So two fif- so maybe two fifty, because most people, if you're advising most people to use their.
If they're on city water.
They're gonna use it.
Absolutely, use, use your hose.
My whole neighborhood does, I don't.
Yeah.
Whatever, and so, but if you're in well, then it would maybe be. Worth paying the two fifty. When two fifty, is that too much? Is that wild?
That's too much. I would, I would say.
Dan has told us too, that sometimes. Uh, if they don't have the, the hundred dollars in the accepted donation. And then sometimes you get it, sometimes you don't.
Right.
Sometimes it's less. Right. So this is, taking you off there just eliminates that conversation with the fire department.
Absolutely. There's, there's people that do it, uh.
Water down.
Watered on. There's a guy who has a water truck and.
Oh, perfect, yeah.
So if somebody calls and wants the fire department to do it. I would feel better up saying, no, call this guy.
Yes, good point.
Water hose or a fuck, call the guy.
Yeah.
How fast do you want your water?
Take it off.
The reconnection fee is still okay? Is that just to turn the bell?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so most of our curb stops are located, most of them are. Not so work in progress.
Yeah.
It's just, if you, if you can find them good, if not, you kind of struggle through it.
And don't you love budgets now?
Absolutely. When are we gonna do the budget for twenty twenty-four?
Why?
Why?
Yeah, we're starting it early. So, okay, just so that I'm clear, we're going four percent on the residential. Did we decide on the commercial at sixteen or are we? Doing.
That's.
Options.
That's three dollars and thirty cents more per month base rate. That's a twelve percent for total of sixteen percent of those. No, we need to make sure we're talking about because. If we're saying it's four percent for residential, so that goes nineteen fifty-eight, so if we say it's another twelve percent, then we should take. Twelve percent of nineteen fifty-eight then.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a new number here. Or whatever.
Twenty-one ninety-three.
Twenty-one ninety-three.
More interesting.
And just.
So four percent to get to the residential and then twelve percent of the residential to get to commercial.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion on table, the EDA budget and CDA contract.
It'll take two minutes. So EDA, just so you know, there's not much in there, but we're starting late, so it should be. Okay, and the only thing in the budget was really to cover the CDA contract. At one. Yeah, they, every other week or something like that.
That's it. Okay, that's it.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Just before you do that. Oh, so if we were to look at, just for discussion, if we. If we look at a person, so if you jump to the next level of one person every week. It's twenty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the year. For two thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars per month. Just about seventy-six dollars an hour. So, by, you know, by the time we get a seat of person here. That could be April or May, wherever Christie signs is available. And if we go and we submit a operation roundup for this balance of, um. Eighteen hundred dollars, seventeen hundred and eighty dollars, we do an operation roundup. And we got a little more funding to use for it to seat a person if we wanna do a one person every, every week.
I don't anticipate that you would have somebody on site or contract to have somebody on site until probably July. Because even if we're starting April, May and June, those are still gonna be organizational meetings and.
We're still having CDA. It's thirty hours, we're showing, it's thirty hours.
We don't have that.
Well, I don't know how much it means up so far. We haven't used any of it yet this year. So we're just the one meeting for three hours. The January twenty-fourth meeting.
Right. One second, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes. Hold a favor, say aye.
Oh, second, I did. Did you second?
Yeah.
Oh, great, thank you.
Hi.
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 Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah, yeah, I, like I said, I, last year.